Welcome by the acting mayor who is the whip of Gasechoniana Local Municipality, that is Councilor Phillips Charles.
Councilor Charles Phillips, very with sweep from the place local municipality is welcome for welcome.
Councilor Charles Phillips, he is now a local amokela kelelo konsel.
And then we are going to tell you why we are here and also give you the overview of the bill that is before us.
Then so is also for your understanding, given him is today here is mete ite insiting of a upsumming from the way to and where but for us is.
Reto chole blala choro chobani relefa, harifesa releka se telekama ikailelo amulawu mulawu thomor kabari buaka o.
And then as I've said, I am here to listen to you, then then will give you ample time to make oral submissions to us.
We is here umna ite laister, onshe also for you genug some a time here um i in dienings on uns de lewe.
Reto chosimula ka chalosa se osi tolle fana koya choralina lena kane kadi chaylo talena, kahore muraka voro tohul fana koya chori li di re di chaylo kamulo.
And then and my colleagues honorable Gancho will then make the closing remarks and way forward.
Oni einesa achwa Gancho for uns off slide, mete off lightings upmarkings.
Mutu mutu lechi Gancho he is now o tla be remofana koya chori anta manzo a tebo.
And then I should think if time permits us, we should be out of here latest by 2 o'clock.
In sorry tight on us country's weapons umtendilats the three year of this slide.
And then.
Kadi lo di tama ile sentler, di tama sitse sentler kiya tsepa chori ka ura ya bo bele re tla be rehele di.
And then I hope everybody has got a bottle of water next to him or else.
I hope all the bottle kee father longs omo vaar.
Ya tsepa chori mongu limongo unalele bottle lo lameti mobile gahah.
And the desk letting you will also arrange some refreshment at the end of the program.
And welcome for it intedig ons heet verfasings gereel for the end of the program.
Eh kapari di rela lesesian komaliin harifesa ka kopa noyaro.
Having said that, let me ask eh the DJ to assist us as we stand up and open this proceeding with the national anthem.
Then for us for you plankman um for us to help me the folks lead, so it is constant and some the folks lead sing.
Reto ko pa DJ Ari Chusa yakare MLari Bina Pina ya bosicha.
Thank you so much, you may be seated.
Realebo ka tata lika na fatse.
And then can I ask then eh the acting mayor and the council whip, Councilor Charles Phillips, to welcome us, over to you, Councilor.
Thank you, sir, for ahchwa Charles Phillips for um ons de verwelkom.
Ne reko pa Councilor Philip chori are amokela.
Yes, good mornings, good morning, tumela. Greetings is in the name of the Lord, our Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit.
I greet in the name of your father, he is here in the island of Jesus.
Yali dumedi sa kalibitola ra ra lika mo ya obi tsepa.
I would like to greet the honorable chair with the colleagues.
I greet erstens the achwa the forester and the colleagues.
Ke rata choro dumedi sa modula stulo leba di ri maholiene.
Also like to welcome and thanks at the same time, want to extend my greetings to all who attend the session this morning.
Darum ye will I also my greet ween so aitstrek on all what here is easy for more a byvuen.
Ke rata chori ke lebo ke bo tse baylo choro batile mo kopa noe ya rona khumpieno.
Thank you too for availing yourselves on this Saturday to this public hearing.
Danki that i isal for perisatrag beskupar gestelit um here weaponbare verwerer byt vuen.
Ke le ke yalebo ka tata, khaile fali chono chori lete ele lamachaso momosong, mo kopa noe ya rona.
Gasechoniana Local Municipality is in the John Taula Haitiwe District, which includes the local municipality of Jo Moralong.
Here municipality is deal from the greater Jo Moralong street.
Eh maspala o orlimo kona wana uka mutlaseka maspala moholo wa Jo Moralong.
Jo Moralong which is formerly named Mochaweng.
Jo Moralong was for in Mochaweng again.
Eh peleyona in Ibizwa Mochaweng.
And Gamahara.
And work Gamahara.
Le Gamahara.
Kuruman is central to the economic activity in Gasechoniana Local Municipal Area.
In Gasechoniana place local municipality area is Kuruman central to the economic activity.
Kuruman e bo thokwa tata mo muruwong wa Gasechoniana.
And pivotal to the greater region's mining industry.
And by a belongre and a draipunt for the place ke umgevings minebau activity.
Ebe la e bo thokwa tata mo tulo ya ya mostre kenseka choro chonale di mine eh.
The vision of this municipality is progressive sustainable development, Gasechoniana the stream of life.
Gasechoniana is the stream of life what also progressif and outbuing is.
Eh Gasechoniana raizorki mo re lebele zon choro chonale kabul sellopele, moteng le chori re lebele di thokwa zabaad.
And as municipality, our mission is to ensure delivery and quality and affordable services in sustainable manner that enhance good governance, equity and accountability to the people of Gasechoniana.
And here municipality is the doelvet um full hope are, gelike and wincegevende dienstlevering de lewe what also qualite is on the mense van here Gasechoniana municipality.
Eh rona ma ikailelo a rona ko chori re kisa di tirelo mo batung tse lo chori di mobu emombo koho dimu, le chori re kona chori re karabelle mo ba akimba rona.
So on behalf of our honorable mayor, Neil George Masichela, also the chairperson of John Taula Haitiwe Region, I would welcome you all.
Wole kato la eh mayora eh chamoholo toropo ekere rata chori kele amokela kaufela kalona.
I thank you.
Name is the burgemeester Neil George Masichela and also forster from the greater district, verwelkom ek i.
Thank you so much, acting mayor.
Why donkey warname the burgemeester.
Warm welcome.
Very welcome on i.
Ke realebo ka tata yakawe mete mayoraka chori amokela kama zo chamofut.
Having said that, let me take this opportunity to introduce my colleagues.
Gegeve the gelehntit will I also now my colleagues on i vorstel.
Eh ke rekenke chono e ke chono chori kidiri kiti se ba di rikana.
I'll start from my left.
Excellent, my linker hand begin.
Ke tohul simula ka lamolema.
And then I will ask themselves to introduce.
Excellent, excellent, the from the self on i vorstel.
Ke toho pa ko pa chori wa naba ikiti.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ngabisa Gancho. I am a member of this portfolio committee. I'm representing African National Congress. Thank you.
Good morning, damas and herea, my name is Ngabisa Gancho, I guess for the word of her for the ANC here what let us for here committee.
Yali dumedi sa nalibitola ka ke Ngabisa Gancho, ke lelo kola ANC, ebe la kape ke lelo kola parliamentary.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cheryl Phillips. I'm a member of the portfolio committee and I represent the Democratic Alliance. Thank you so much.
Good morning, damas and herea, my name is Cheryl Phillips, I guess led for the report the field committee and I for the word of the democratic alliance.
Yali dumedi sa nalibitola ka ke Cheryl Phillips, ke lelo kola DA, ebe la kape ke lelo kola committee eh.
Good morning, damas and herea. My name is Nazir Paulson. I guess led for the committee as oh and I for the word of the EFF.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nazir Paulson. I am a member of the portfolio committee and I represent the EFF.
Yali dumedi sa nalibitoke Nazir Paulson, ke lelo kola committee eh, ebe la ke lelo kola EFF.
Good morning, good morning, dumelan. My name is Simpuwembata. I'm the member of this portfolio committee and also representing the ANC. Thank you.
Good morning, damas and herea, my name is Simpuwembata, I guess led for here report the field committee and I for the word of the ANC.
Ke yali dumedi sa nagalibitoke Simpuwembata, ke lelo kola ANC, ebe la kape ke lelo kola committee eh.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tembeka Ntunu. I'm a member of the portfolio committee and I'm representing the ANC.
Good morning, damas and herea. My name is Tembeka Ntunu and I for the word of the ANC as led for the committee.
Ke yali dumedi sa bothe nalibitola ka ke Tembeka Ntunu, ke lelo kola committee eh, ebe la ke lelo kola ANC.
Can you give this to colleagues, the microphones, they need to introduce themselves. Welcome, Majoro. I saw you coming.
Thank you very much, Chair of the Session and good morning. Naki na Councilor Dineo Lutwete, the mayor of Jo Moralong Local Municipality. I am here in my capacity as a representative from Salga. Thank you.
Good morning, damas and herea, I guess burgemeester for the Jo Moralong municipality and I guess for the word of her for Salga.
Good morning, everybody present here today. My name is Elena, my surname is English. I'm also the mayor of Tansaban Local Municipality, but I'm also represent Salga here. Thank you very much.
Good morning, damas and herea, my name is Elena English, I guess the burgemeester for Tansabani municipality and I for the word of Salga.
Ah, we missed you yesterday, mayor. We missed you. I'm glad, we are happy that you came in. We were in your town yesterday.
Burgemeester, this is Bible is from da here and see the mess yesterday to uns i door besuket.
Welcome, Salga PEC. Welcome to our meeting and thank you so much for supporting your colleagues. We don't take this for granted.
By welcome on i Salga for the word of her in that i colleagues come understand it, us vardered.
Eh re lebo ke le tata, Salga ka choralina ting, leko ho MLamokatwalona, eh re dumedi ta ta lele ting.
Okay, you you can see there on my right, I am accompanied by one man and some ladies. This our parliamentary staff, support staff.
Darup my rachtrandit uns man in a part damas, in that is uns parliamentary passioniel.
La buna molzo chong la rona lamocha, eh chonale datu omuno, we re omuno si, le bomme ke ba di riba rona ko parliamentary.
And then we've brought eh the support from both eh interpretation and broadcasting facilities. They are all here with you as well.
Then it is also for da talk dienste in outside dienste what for da here is.
Eh ebe la khumpieno re na le ba Fethu Lady, baylo choro batlo chusa ka choto lo kafa, ebe la re na le ba Gasechonana choro ba Gasechonana kopa noyaro.
Then thank you again for attending all of you and my name is Faith Mutambi. I'm the chairperson of the portfolio committee on environment, forestry and fisheries.
By dankey, veryens that i here is, my name is Faith Mutambi, I guess the forester for here committee for bosbau, viserae and umgevings Salga.
Ke yalebo gahape nalibitola ka ke Faith Mutambi, ke modula stulo he wa committee eh, e lebele zindi tabazati kuloko de kwa le taro ya di ka.
Let me take this opportunity to greet the leadership of our coysan that are in our midst.
I greet work, rock the coysan laishka what for da here by uns anches lighted.
Eh re kape ke tsia tsolo eh, di dumedi sa ba e tele di pele ba ma coysan, banale rona khumpie.
And then also to welcome the two PEC members of Salga, the two mayors of the two municipalities that is Jo Moralong and the Tansabani local.
Then verwelkom ons also the Jo Moralong and Tansabani burgemeesters what also Salga for the word of her is here for da.
Re lebo ke kape mayora ta eh Tansabani, le Jo Moralong, ebe la ele maloko a PEC ya Salga realebo.
And you, Councilor Phillips, for hosting us here today.
And also verwelkom ons i ratzit Phillips what for the word of her today.
Re lebo ke le Councilor Phillips, ka chori are amokese eh mo khumpie.
And then our esteemed members of the public, the people of Gasechoniana Local Municipality and the people of Jo, Jo, John Taulo Haitiwe District.
Then also verwelkom ons the public for Jo Moralong and the greater district in here area.
Eh ke lebo ke eh tata lilona batu ba khumpie kiling, ba mo Gasechonana leba John Moralong, realebo ka tata chonate kalon.
In our midst, we have got officials from the Department of eh forestry, fisheries and environment.
Ones it work antenore for the department for bosbau, viserae and umgevings Salga in us mid.
Eh mo karakarana re na le ba tankedi ba bazwa ngbo le fa pingla tikuloko de kwa le taro ya di ka bi.
I also believe our colleagues from Escom, they are in our midst here, the SOE.
I hello that also colleagues for Escom, the staatsbesitte entity is a gear for da team word of.
Ya tsepa lo chori ba tankedi ba Escom, ba tengu karakarona khumpieno.
And we've got all our parliamentary officials and support staff in our midst.
Ones it also for the parliamentary antenore and understenings passioniel here team word of for da.
Ebe la re na le ba di riba le fa pa le ba parliamentary mo karakarona.
And all the fire stakeholders who are gathered here today for the purpose of this hearing.
And then also the brand belonghebendes what for da here team word of is by here verhadren.
Le boche baylo chori ke bankaka rolo mo tibele lo ya milelo, baylo choro banale rona khumpie.
Let me, let me be upfront on behalf of my colleagues from the portfolio committee on environment, forestry and fisheries.
I will open early with i wees name is my colleagues for here committee for here department for bosbau, viserae and umgevings Salga.
Eh re ke kha kise kha e ho ba di rikana ba le fa pa la tikuloko de kwa le taro ya di ka bi.
I would like to thank you all, especially the members of the public who are gathered here to make their oral and written submission to this public hearing.
I will i all the bedang for all the public what for da here team word of is um alle mondelinge and geskrevende dienings on uns de lewe where here way to and where.
Eh rata chole lebo ka boche ba akika chotla fa, kotho di ra di chaylo kamulo mu, li di chaylo ze kwa di lewe.
We are truly thankful eh to your official, Councilor Phillips.
Ones is by dankbar on i, meneer overatlet Phillips.
Is the officials of eh Gasechoniana Local Municipality for their invaluable support to our parliamentary support staff who have been here in advance.
And also by dankey on the place local municipality Gasechonani, so antenore what verlik by understening habited on uns understenings passioniel mede real in logisticke for here verhadren.
Ra lebo ka eh mo kwanamu kancelara, leba di rebote ba Gasechonana eh gamo koli lela di ramala lukisa zaka ten chori re kona chori re ke reto chona lebito eh.
We readily support you and we readily appreciate your unwavering support for making this hearing to happen.
Ones were dear verlik and verkbar understening um here verhadren and mindlike item mark.
Re lebo ka tata khomena kane, ka te koya lena ya chori re kona chori re zon lepele ka kopa noe ya rona.
Would also like to thank you, the different stakeholder groupings that are here today.
Ones bedang also the verstelende belonghebende gruppe what for da here team word of is.
Eh rata chori re lebo ke le bankaka rolo ba farlo kading, baylo chori ba tengu karakarona khumpie.
In particular for setting aside time to come and meet with us as we process this national field and forest firemen medbe.
And besoner that i time of say gesetet in the proceeds what ons here newe waisagings way to and where opi veld in bosbrande eh verwaark.
Eh ke lebo ke tata ka chori eh lebele rona mo kopa noe eh, mo ilon chori reto chole bella eh di kazeo za molawana o olinteh mulawu, thomolidi me metalo eh mo mulawu o wa bosicha ba, o lebele zindi tibelo ya milelo.
Although we are your public representatives in parliament tasked with the responsibility of lawmaking amongst others.
And all the well ons i weaponbare for the word of her is in the parliament what vertrae word mede talk om weetet estel.
Rona releba eh mede ba si cha ba ko parliamentary, rona ti roya rona ko chori ri di remla o.
Our constitution and other applicable laws eh they directly tells us to to consult with you, our people, seek your views as we make the laws.
Is that also the man daat from the ground weet in other weet in the land that ons i mood raadpleeg and the proceeds om weetet eskip in te waisa.
Mulawu te ware na le milau eming, yo na eh re laylang chori re tsona zare kemo batum barona, re kohu ba di chaylo zabo zabo na, kharidi ramila chori re kona chori re di akareze mo.
And then in the spirit of co- cooperative governance is enshrined in our constitution and further by the Intergovernmental Relations Acts.
And then in the gears for cooperative regering, follow see ground weet.
Oh yeah, kape ka mulawu o wa puso kaka ne wa eh le milawana eh lo chori zama isana le ewya tirisano.
Eh which seeks to establish a framework for the national government, provincial government and local governments to promote and facilitate eh cooperative governance.
Eh what gistig is mede ramwaark for national place and provincial regerings om cooperative regering te beforde.
Eh khoro rona rtsanta re re kopi se, choro choba le puso tarahano eh mo bosicha ba, profensi le puso ya se le kai.
That's why we have invited eh officials from both national, provincial and local governments to be part of these public hearings.
And darum it ons antenore for national, provincial and place local municipality genoy um dealt neem in team word of the ways for the verhadren.
Eh ke ka chori ebe le ra, mema di official te lo chori ba taha ko puso ya bosicha ba, ya profensi le basile kai, chori ba nete mo kopa noe ya ro.
We all know that in the midst of these deliberations, there will be service delivery concerns that you are going to raise with us.
Ones is bewest that in the proceeds for here besprekings, soldar dienstleverings quesies ways what geoperral word.
Rea ite chori hansa rtsala pele ka eh mo kopa noe ya rona eh, kotho chonale di nta, te lo chori di di tama la na le tabaya di tirelo mo si cha bi.
And we have brought along these officials with us.
And for da the rede, it ons here antenore samet ons gebrang.
Ke ka chori ke lonale ba kaleo le di lenchori re ba ko pe eh di officials chori ba nete mo kopa noe eh.
I want to emphasize this, that as parliament, we value your contribution that you are going to make in this public hearing.
I will grach claim leader up that, as the parliament, heh ons ongelovlik by a warde on the bydras what i han mark for da.
Eh ba ka chori ke kha kiki khatelle, nka ya chori rona rele parliamentary, eh re zia di chaylo zalona, di lebo thokwa tata.
And we don't want anyone of you to live here unhappy thinking that their contributions are not taken into consideration.
And for da the rede, will ons also grat ni, that i man for da here is so under free de mood verlaat and feel that alle bydras ni geach word ni.
Ke kha kiki ba ka chori eh kharitama fa, ebe lo chori ba tkaufela ba i dumedi, so kusana le moto, ona kana chori eh na di chaylo zakhake, di siwa di si bo thokwa.
And that's the main reason we invited these colleagues, so that they must attend your issues that may not be related to the bill.
And this is the word of her, um ons here colleagues genoyit, so that alle andhag kantsink on the quesies what alkni verbandit mede here the way to and where ni.
Ke ka chori ebe le ra, mema ba tankedi, kam chori bulien katen, chori ba nete, chori ba thokon chori ba tusi, ka zona di nka ze za di kwayo zelo chori di kabe di kasi.
However, the team on that right hand side of my table.
Then also the span here o on my rachtrand, what by the towel sit.
And us here on top.
And ons here on i workand opi verwe.
Eh se chapa se, ba leba bo na kamolzo chong la ka lamocha le re na re limo kodi mu.
We will be noting and capturing the inputs of those of you who will be speaking directly on the substance of this bill.
Ones solda now also for the gene what well in saw lewe for da, alle in saw noti le in nearscref in andhag daransink opi the way to and where specific.
Reto chongala di lozo, ke ka di chaylo zalona, ma ba bi di nka, ze bo thokwa za mulawu, mulawu thomu, orto berri bisana kawa na khumpie.
I can assure you, your inputs will form part of our decision-making process on this bill.
I can for i for sure that i in saw, deal saw for um, when you it come by besluit making, when you ons here way to and where besprek.
Ke yali tsepisa chori di chaylo zalona, di kohu di reciwa, kharitza di chezo, ma ba bi le mulawu thomu o.
Just a summary of what this law that was seeking your view, it's all about.
I will grach for you upsuming here where here way to and where, what on i in saw, grach will in forde.
Eh ke kofa naka kutufa zofela, ya di nka ze bo thokwa za eh mo mulawu, mulawu thomu o lo chori tla be rubisa naka o na khumpie.
I believe all of you, you've got some green papers at your hands.
I hello that i all the green document in i ande it.
Ya tsepa chori kaufela kalona le tseri pa biri ze tala, kaufela karo.
And then if you read there on the first page, there's a purpose of the bill.
Opie erste platsai is the duel endes for here way to and where.
Eh kharibala mo eh mulitaka le la pele chonale ma ikailelo eh mulawu.
You'll see somewhere, it says the main purpose is to regulate and manage felled fires by controlling their spread and by imposing obligation on landowners to prepare and maintain fire breaks.
Then so i works in, i was in the document standard that are, do it is om feld in bosbrande te reguleren te beheer, deer ground aynash, antemurag in hofte tutepas that alle eh brand stroike mood implementier.
Eh ra buna fao chori chonale mo, lon chori eh hubua mo ka taba chori tsona zare lebele eh taba eh ya zama iso, ya tiri lozo mololo chori eh horu swema i karabe lo ho bangba di sa, chori le buna ba kona chori bangka ka rolo mo eh le nanule lo chori ba kona chori ba di re di di, we te di loze tibella mo lo chori o sabo wa kulela kosi tensesi.
It also makes eh provision for the duty on landowners to make provision for the management of felled fires and on their lands.
This mark also for shining for ground aynash, om feld brande opa alle ayndom te kanbeheer in besteer.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
It is in this regard that the key amendments being proposed in this bill primarily comprise enhancing of definitions.
En dit is om hier die warum die wif waisigings in hier die Wetsontwerp, wif salklik bestaan uit waisigings van definities.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
It further provides for the facilitation of the formation of fire protection associations by municipalities and traditional councils.
Darum je wil het ook voorziening maken voor brandbeskermingsverenigings, wat gesteeg kon worden die er Municipaliteiten en traditionele laiers.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o. We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
And I think our traditional and coisan leaders are very excited about this because it gives them powers to also enforce this law.
Ik denk ons traditionele koisanlaiers is ba opgewonden hier oer, van dit zal voor helle machtig ge om hier die Wetter te kan toepassen.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Of critical importance, this bill compares municipalities and other state owned against that manage state land to join fire protection associations.
Wat ook baan belangrijk is, is dat hier die weet, dan nou staatsentiteiten, openbare entiteiten, staatsinstellingen en municipaliteiten zal noep om hier die Brandbeskermingsverenigings aan te sluiten, helle zal dit moet doen.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
And this national field and forest fire amendment bill, once enacted as the law, is gonna be called the National Felt Fire Act.
En hier die weet zal nou, als die nationale veldbrand weet bekennstaan, hij zal herdoe pwoord.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
All of you who are here today will agree with us that we do have frequent incidents of devastating felled fires.
Ik is zeker allemaal hier den Würdig samen met mij samen, stem dat ons gereelde gevallen het van vernietigende veldbranden.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
And these frequencies and intensities are due to increase because of the climate change we are experiencing.
En die gereeltijd van hier die veldbranden en die intensiteit van hier die veldbranden kan toegeskrijven worden aan klimaatverandering.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
And then you'll all agree with me that this province of yours is prone to fire incidents.
Is ook samen met mij samen, stem dat hier die provincie baan meer koispad is voor veldbranden en brandincidenten.
Ja, zapak, we willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Yeah, solely because of this dry vegetation that's around here.
En dit is als gevolg van die baan droe planten groei in hier die gebied.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
So we are bringing in this act of parliament to regulate such incidences.
En darum brengen ons hier die weet van die Parlament af in, om solke incidenten en omstandigheden te reguleren.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Felled fires cause serious social, economic and environmental damage.
Veldbranden veroorstel ongegeloflijke socio-economische en omgevingsprobleme.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
It is precisely for this reason that we are holding these public hearings to derive your esteemed inputs.
En dit is om daar die rede, waarom ze hier die openbare vergaderingen hou, om i ervaren en kundige inzetten in te voorder.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
We need your inputs to formulate and promulgate a law that speaks to our local and national circumstances.
Onze die in zal men nuerig, om hier die Wetter kan formulieren, wat die omgeving in ons ons landse omstandigheden kan ansprek en bevorder.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
I therefore plead with you to feel free to express your views on this bill.
Darum noep ik je aan, om rechtig vrij te voel, om i opinies op hier die Wetsontwerp, of vorgestelde Wetsontwerp uit de lich.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Be assured that your views matter to us.
Ik wil voor i weer eens verzekerd, dat i opinies voor ons baan belangrijk is.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Your views matters to us as parliament.
I opinies mag voor ons als die Parlament saak.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
This is why we are meeting with you our people.
En dit is ook om ons van dag met i, die mensen, ons mensen, vergader.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
I therefore urge you to participate fully.
En darum moet ik gek i aan, om ten volle deel te neem.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Be part of this history, once this act is enacted, you must be able to say, yes, we were part of the lawmaking process.
Om deel te wees van die geschiedenis, waar hier die Wetsontwerp geimplementeerd wordt, moet i kan say, ja, ons was daar, ons was deel van die prozess.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
And with these few words, I'll hand over to my colleague, Honorable Phillips, to take you through the procedure that we are going to follow.
Darum handig ik nou oer aan mijn collega, achbarre Phillips, om vereet te verdeidelijk hoe die prozess nou zal voortgeset worden.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Okay, we got it, thanks.
Onze het om, danki.
Good morning once again, ladies and gentlemen.
Weer eens hui more, damme seniere.
Ja, du meri sa bom mele bon tate.
That is for ons a absolute furah, om die Parlament nou i tu te kan brengen van dag.
To us, it is an absolute privilege to be able to bring parliament to you on this day.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
I would just like to outline the procedure that needs to be followed before you make your submission.
Ik wil graag niet voor je uit inzetting ge van die procedure, wat gefolg met wordt voor dat i in zal lever.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Um, I think we'll start with the people on my left.
Ik denk was sobachen, medie raya hier aan mijn linkerkant.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
If you have a submission you would like to make, please raise your hand.
Als i enige in zal het, wat i wil indien, restekas ablif i hand op.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
You will be identified and invited to take a seat in the middle row by the parliamentary staff.
I zal identificeren worden en aan genui worden, om in die middelste rij is het lak in te neem, die er die passionjolit van die Parlament.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
I moet ablif, i zal voorstel met i naam van in die gebied waaruit i kom.
We would like you to introduce yourself with your name, surname, and also the area from which you are coming.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
You will have five minutes to make your submission.
I zal vijf minuten geken worden, om i in zal te lever.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Please start by stating whether you support or whether you do not support the amendments to the National Felt and Forest Fire Amendment Bill.
Dan wil ons front, dat i ablif sobachen, die er te say of i hier die waisigingswetsontwerp op die nationale veld en bosbrand weet onderstehen, en of i hier die waisigingsstien staan.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
You will then have an opportunity to substantiate why you support or why you do not support the bill.
Dan zal i geleendheid ge ge worden, om te kan onderstehen, of 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 om te kan noemen, waarom i hier die Wetsontwerp onderstehen, of waarom i hier die Waisigingswetsontwerp die instaan.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o. We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Please address the fire amendment, um, bill before raising any service delivery issues that you might have.
Ons fraa ablift dat die eerstens, die waisigingswetsontwerp op veldbranden zal bespreek en ansprek, voor dat die enige Dienstleverungskoaisis begin bespreek.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
In addition to your oral submission, you are welcome to make a written submission, and you can hand the written submission to our parliamentary staff sitting over there, Chaleka will take it from you.
Samen die monderdingen in zal, wat hij kan lever, is i ook welkom, om gescrieven in die ning te maken, wat i dan daar bij die onderstehingspassionjol kan indien bij Chaleka, zij zal dit bij i opneem.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
The meeting is being recorded, and we really do value your contributions, and we'd like to encourage you to participate fully in this meeting.
Hier die vergadering wordt dan zo opgeniem, en ons waar die er i in zal, verschrikkelijk baan, en ons moeder g, i werkelijk aan, om ten volle deel te neem aan hier die prozess.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Thank you so much, dear colleague.
Baan danki, achbarre collega.
Now we are starting the process.
Ons begint dan nou met die prozess.
I'll plead with the people from the front, you follow rows, and tate, can you move to the chair? Follow the, yeah, the next person behind in that row until you fill up those chairs. It's your democratic right, majoro, it's fine. Okay. Do we still have more hands? How many chairs are we left with there?
Is nog iemand dat zo prooi?
Three more from this side.
Nog drie mensen van hier die kant?
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
We'll give our traditional leaders at the end if they've got something to say.
Ons zogons geeft ons traditionele laiers om ten einde in zal te lever.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Two more? Can you start from the back on the other side if there are two more people?
Van achteraf van die ander kant, is nog twee andere mensen?
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Can I see a hands of people who want to raise issues this side?
Kan i mensen aan hier die kant de handen opsteken, als helle enige koaisis he?
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
Maybe you're still thinking, let's start with this other one, Sarah.
Kom eens ge, kon somit dat dieerte den, kom eens begin met die dieerde.
Yes, you are the first to raise the hand.
Ies, jeersch pas om het ja, toch, voorstel.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
This is your chance, say. You introduce yourself, if you are coming from a structure, you'll tell us which structure, if you are representing yourself, you'll tell us from which word in which nationality.
I kan i zelf ablif voorstel, en voor ons ande of enige instansie beverten Würdig, en ook als i zelf kom, wat ze wijk i van dan kom.
Thank you, Jefferson, and those around you. My name is Andrew Sehano. I am representing Rainbow Farmers Union, that affiliates under John Towlow, has the Agricultural Forum, it's a member thereof.
Baan danki voorzitter, en allemaal wat die bij die tafel sit, mijn naam is Andrew, is geniaman, ik verteidiger die Rijnbouwboerenvereniging, ons is geaffiliëer in een landbouwvereniging.
We willen heel zo, ke ga die twelo zalona, die gohudi rice wa karri zia die cheso ma ba bi le mulau thomo o.
If I had power, I would say the interpreters must pause for a while. If possible, I would be able to interpret myself, so that I can save time because I have only five minutes. Jefferson, a point of departure. Ja, that's Montlek, that's Montlek, that's a question that we're. A point of departure. Uh, there is this hypothesis, that when God created heaven and earth, animals, plants and everything, he said to men, he created man the last, and said to men... There is this hypothesis that when God created heaven and earth, animals, plants, and everything, he said to men, he created man the last, and said to men, "You shall be the dominion of everything here." And there is this hypothesis that says God left everything balanced at sixty percent, and it was the responsibility of a human being to take it up or back. And what man did, reverse. Everything reversed. That's what a human being did. Now, as your colleague said, that the way of doing or of presenting will be to say whether you are positive or you are negative to the act. I would say, "I am negative." And the reason thereof are as follows. There are five main things that affect farmers. One, access to land. Two, access to water. Three, access to the market. Four, I would say that, I'm forgetting this fourth one. The fifth one would be the effects of climate change. Those four or those five things are the main things. Now, if you don't do them right, something is wrong. Fire is not a problem, Chaperson. Fire is a signal of something that is wrong, that we as human beings are doing wrong. There is some, there are some things, and here we need a traditional healer or doctor that can diagnose exactly what are those problems or that problem. Fire is just a sign of something wrong. Today, we are here. JT, JTG, this region, we are about nine thousand small holder farmers here, and there are about three hundred and fifty commercial farmers, white commercial farmers here. And of the nine thousand small holder farmers, eighty percent of the land is not held by them. Eighty percent of the land is held by the three hundred and fifty families, white commercial farmers. And the nine thousand are holding only about twenty percent. Now, there's a problem you must start to see now. Inside it all, it's a whole shebang, Chaperson. Something here is wrong. If your child is suffering malnutrition, and you try to, and malnutrition causes wounds over the body, and you try to heal those wounds, you are not going to get the problem right. Go to the cause of everything. The cause of fire, there is something. I don't know, I'm not a traditional healer, I'm not a traditional doctor. You'll get it today. Now, if we can reverse this car and go and navigate where the problem is, the problem will automatically be solved without even having to go to say that the fire is a problem. Fire is just a signal of something that is not going right. Here today, I believe there are no commercial farmers here. The very people that are holding land, that could be assisting us by saying that of the land of JTG, we are only going to give you twenty percent so that you can overcome your problems, they are not here. Another problem, here today you call farmers, and only a few farmers are here today. Can you also navigate where the problem is? Because we as JTG Forum, Rainbow Farmers Union, we want your assistance to assist us to bring the JTG farmers together, together with the very same commercial, white farmers. They're supposed to be here. We are the children of this country, all of us. We need to work this country, all of us. Freedom Charter says that those who live in this country will work it, and this land shall belong to them. So try to find out where the problem is. Some of the signals, Chaperson, is dumping of rubbish everywhere. I suppose you could drive outside to the, for you to go and see for yourself what is happening. These things are also some signals that some things are not right here in JTG, that need to be also to be corrected. People are, today, there are no more donkey cars. There are only cars, cars here. There are servicing cars. The way they dispose their oils and chemicals is very irresponsible. There are sixteen mines here. Of the sixteen mines, Chaperson, only three, we told, only three are abiding by the law of water licensing. And the rest of the other mines are not disposing the water responsibly, and this water, they dispose it under the ground, and it is going to affect the farmers directly. So we need to know what is happening with regard to the other mines, and how do these people access license, licenses? Because they do have licenses, but they don't have water license. Their mines are operating, but you don't know how are those mines operating. We are not organized as farmers, Chaperson. Please assist us as a national government to organize ourselves. If we could be organized, this hall would be full as we speak. We are not organized. Even if you can come up with giving the fire extinguishers and what have you, before we are organized, that will just be a waste of time. Organize us first so that we are organized, then you can be able to say good people now. Because when this government started this, they talked about the RDP. You needed, you failed. You should have started with the RDP of the mine first. Because people are not right here upstairs, and all of us, black and white, are not right here. We need to be taught some things right. Introduce this subject in schools, Chaperson, in schools, right, at school level, in churches. I heard them rote preaching, saying that every school that is not having a garden, every church that is not having a garden must be closed. I support. That school must be closed. If you don't have a garden. Let us teach our small children that fire, don't play with fire. You play with fire, we play with life. So this thing must be started at a very early age.
I would like to say, damen is in here, bye danke for your gathering, for vandaag, maar dat is iets wat niet recht is, wat moet recht gemaakt worden. Zonder dat ons 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 droom, ons zal nergens gaan. Ik wil graag vragen dat die voorzitter moet ons helpen om die boeren bij elkaar te maken. Ik praat van wit en zwart boeren. Die reed de stand voor die buur als een buur, niet die buur zoals een wit buur of een brein buur of een water buur. Ons moet bij elkaar komen. Help ons die reageren om ons die ons story recht te krijgen. Maar hey, redakrola redza marre hitalakwa, rebua rehitalakwa, oosina cpcr kasdrang. Ben baliha sebaka ebakan baliha, batlihurutu sahurshabar, rahu contribute fifty percent ya leha. Hurlutlutlu kelehutvolalu, lumata mahalani mukuluhuluhuana, nine thousand small farmers. Har rebua kama kwaba li three hundred and fifty, bakka ebatubaba sahluhurtu sahurri, rennelele ha. Jij jo nebo tata jornale jo nejo, die farmer. Har sahli mo, rehalij, repathalij, har sahli mo reko pa ne. Renale forum, maybe do an hot iti JTG forum. Eren rebatahurri, die organizations, to the, the ancley, the katasahayon nehurri, rennelehu nehurri. Ronale, really the farmer, as a JTG, rebua kalinjulilele wajala, har sahui kalinjulilewajala, ra loa ra ba hey.
You've exhausted your time and you've done exactly well in interpreting everything. Rally war and that, rally war. Okay. Honorable Chair of the session, let me also thank the committee that you are with here today.
Bye danke in voorschrijving van die commiteer en ik wil bye dank je zeggen dat je vandaag ietienwoordig is.
Kij lebochele maloko akomitea linteng fa kumpieno.
Akje leboche ba giboche ba valinteng baylongarwet lugo tsaka rolo.
And all the residents who have come here to take part.
In all the inwoners wat gekomen om deel te nemen.
Bokolo se kolo du kosi tsarona baylongarwet kibone bing ba mumu karulung eya rona. It's a fa fabaliteng.
Especially our traditional leaders who are the owners of land, I hope that they are with us today.
Voor al ons traditionele laiers, helle is wel die einaar van die grond, zo ons wippeles alle ietienwoordig somit ons vandaag.
I'm standing here as a representative of Salga, the South African Local Government Association, and the mayor of Jomorolong Local Municipality.
Ik stond je is een 14-woriger van Salga en ik is burgermeester van Jomorolong Plaselijke Municipiteit.
Kij mfa kij mss Salga ebila kelerator op wa Jomorolong Municipati.
In short, I must just say that at Salga, we had a briefing on the presentation that was made here today.
At Salga is het onze voorlegging gehad of anbidding gehad over die specifieke wettgeving wat vandaag voor gebraut wordt.
Rele Salga rele ra bledesana kadin tsa mulautkomo ore buhleksanan kaon eya kumpieno.
It is on that note that we appreciate the presentation that has been made by yourself, honorable.
En hiermee wil ons dankbaar uit spreken over die voorlegging wat die angebeten achwaar voorscherter.
Kij kahore ratiling, kamukho wilo nga beadiin tsa kateng hal ne resimula kopano mudulasstulo.
The role and mandate of Salga is very clear when coming to the local government.
Salga's rol in mandat is bye daile kas ons verwaes na plaslike regiering.
My gara belo li diro ya Salga yona itakile harita mutabenza zamaiso zasa lechaye.
We understand the mandate.
Ons verstand in die mandat.
Re talohanya diro ya rona.
Re talohanya leonide separation of powers.
We also understand the separation of powers.
Ons verstand in de rauw scheiding is van macht.
It is for that at Salga we are in support of the act of the amendments that has been made.
En hiermee is ons als Salga ondersteunend door die wijzigings van jerry wetsund waar.
Kij kaleba kaleo rona re len Salga re tsa lozama isana le mu lautkomo.
Honorable Chair, I'll be failing in my responsibilities if I do not speak on behalf of Jomorolong Local Municipality Mayor.
Voorscherter ak som is lak en maiplichte as die burgermeester van Jomorolong Plaselijke Municipiteit as ak nie jerry mensen 14-wordig nie.
Kij tabekesa di ritiro ya kakamukho oma leba, kaki sabui molikhatung, kaki sabui ya ka mayara wa Jomorolong.
As a rural municipality in the district with more than one hundred and eighty villages.
Ya ka maspala moditulonsa mahkaya moylon horre we ya konale metse e hundred, e, kay?
Hundred and eighty?
E, e, hundred and eighty.
Als de municipiteit in die plaslike of die landlijke gebied met meer dan 180 districte?
It is for that that in your presentation when you said that municipalities must join the fire mission or join the fire associations.
Kij uku lelele bakalela kahore ore bo maspala, kotsanetsa kahore leboana inne karo lo ya di associations se se lo kahore, di tibela mil, di tibela milelo.
Dus is wat ie gesaid in die voorlegging dat municipiteiten moet anslijten bij jerry brandverenigings.
Honorable Chair, I'm standing here and I want to speak on the team that we are having at Jomorolong Local Municipality.
Voorscherter ak wil groeg ie stil staan in veritaal van die span wat ons bij Jomorolong Plaselijke Municipiteit heet.
Kij mfa kij mata kahore kij talose leka sithopa serna len sona mu maspaling warona.
We are having a team and we call them the working on fire team.
Onze ete span en onze ete span ten oom is working on fire, so is befach brande span?
Re na le sithopa se bezwang kahore kij working on fire, ele baobalon kahore ba bagira kahore tibela milelo ewya na kha.
A very dedicated team of young people who are volunteers.
Hier is een span van jong mensen wat tu, wat tuweding waes wat jerry werk voor ons doen.
Kij bat baylo kahore ba chabai kem sedizan tata, baylo kahore ba ritusa kaya na diro ewya tibelo mile.
A team of volunteers who are always on task and ready to be in action when they are called out.
Hier is een span vrijwilliger wat altijd gereet is om uitgerupte woord.
Kij sithopa sa baobalon kahore ba netso kahore ba diro ba ritusa kanakotsotlakaba badlakha ba nating ba ritusa.
And it must be noted in this meeting that as a municipality, we are giving all support that we can to this team.
Ons wil ook duidelijk maken in die vergadering dat als de municipiteit geeuw ons voor jerry span al die norage wat helle norage heet.
Kapi re badlakahore re kattella kahore rona re le maspala, re badtakaka zotse lo kahore dia kloka kha.
The unfortunate part is that they don't fall in our structure.
Die jammerte van dit is dat helle volrum nie die of van ons structuur nie.
E taba ewtisa mutoko kahore bona kaba weli motlasa kha zamaiso ya rona.
It is for that that I'm standing here to say that the separations of powers are very clear, to say that the national parliament is the only body that can, that can come up with policies that must at the latest stage be implemented at the locals.
En dus kom ik hier om te zeggen dat die verdelen van macht die so een probleem is en is nie die parlement wat de beleid zou kan endbreng om te verschrikken dat ons jerry kan uitvoeren.
Yano monching e ya koh arohanywa kadi tata, konale tsa ewya kahore konali di lo se lo kahore narke so konohu di diro, kantika ser guanka sona, parlamenta kiona eka di ramu laule police, maba pili di tsa se sa mu lautkomo or guanka.
Some of them are here with me today and I wish to like them to stand up that you can see them.
Baba mba bona ba nalorona fa nekera ta kahore ba eme kahore le ba bon.
Een paar van helle zie vandaag somit mij en ik wil om als ze blijf op te staan zo het ie helle kan zien.
That's our team, who are always ready in these difficult conditions.
Kij sona sithopa sarona bona badula baykem sedize kanakotsotse lekama e mo ali bi ma kamukho alimbi ma kate.
Helle is ons span en helle is altijd gereet voor jerry moeilijke toestanden.
It is for that that I am making a submission that can we please, can you please make sure that we absorb them into our structures? And when I speak of absorbing them, I speak of the national government giving us a grant that will make that possible.
Kij kaleba kale, la kahore kij tohudi ra tsayelok, ya kahore rema kenyemo tasa kha se tao se sarona se, kaseu ne kipopake kahore parlamenta iri ritusa kaseu le kahore, ba ritusa kapi kadi chale to kahore ba konohore ba ba rema kenyemo se tao saro.
Dus die inso wat ak wil lever vandaag is om als jerry vro als ze blij kan nou een manier wees wat ons jerry mensen kan deel maken van ons structuur. En wat ik bedoel bij deel maken is kan nou helle inneem en per nationale vlak goed keer in krij, om helle deel te maken en dan ook voor helle toelaagte kan betalen.
You've stated correctly to say that fire incidents are reported precisely because of the drivers in the northern cape. And in Jomorolong, that's what we are faced with, especially this time of the year, the seasons.
O, buletse sencha, o, wille sencha kahore, kuruña koh khamulelo, koba kwa kij sona di jalo se 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 omile, kanteka mo tulon eya rona e, kelo kij sona se gran kahore kuruña milelo emin.
Ias kureka si verwaes na die brande wat geraporteer wordt is of voor al die Jomorolong Municipiteit, as gevol van ons is de weer plant.
It is for that that we are also standing here to say that we don't only want to see them working overtime when it's that season.
Kij kaleba kaleo kahore ya ka kij mfa kahore kij tohukattella lo hukopan tsa e ya kahore, wa konohore ba ba diro ka ba diro mo se tao se, se kolo se tonakana ko ewya koh kuruña khamilelo e ya na.
En dus kom ons werkse ons volgende ete jerry mensen moet wordheid werk as het brandheid is nie.
And in conclusion, Chair, kij mfa no kitlaku buela la machuti tuiti abaki ba Jomorolong, baylong kahore raitsa kahore unemploymente ikuhu di mutata ya, raitsa kahore Jomorolong Local Municipality ite mo kela dikwe lo za de old infrastructure.
I'm also standing here to ask this, to emphasize that we have a problem of unemployment and we have many challenges. And the other challenge, one of the challenges is the aging infrastructure.
Wat ik wil ook doen ak wil kompleemle ie so ons werkloosheid seifer wat bye werk is. Ons het ook verschijne probleeme, maar een van jerry arge probleeme is ons infrastructuur wat verouder.
But we understand the call that's made by our national government of working together in making sure that we change and improve the lives of our communities.
Ifela kia talohanya kahore ya ka police, ka police ya parlamenta kahore, reberaka mo khorotse kahore konohore ritise di peto.
Maar ons verstand wil ki rupen voor die nationale regering af, wat se os moet som werk omie levens voor ons mensen verbeter te maken.
And accepting this, this bill, we know that that will be implemented, everything will be implemented. And we will try and improve, not even try, we will make sure that the lives of our communities improve. Thank you.
Kahore amokela mulautkomo ora zepa kahore, zotse se di wetzemo mulautkomo oh kahore di ka di ra kha la, me kaseu ma silo abach barona adla to kafala kia leboch.
Ons het zeker ag di jerry wetsund waar Salga implementeer wordt en ons ons beste preuer om ons mensen's levens te verbeter. Ons hoonie eigenlijk bluebeer nie, ons gaan zeker maken dat ons mensen's levens verbeter wordt. Bye dankie.
Thank you, Majora.
Bye dankie, Majora.
I think you can even further right to us because I realize you had so much things to say.
Ik denk ie kan sal zo'n schrijven want ik weet die bye gehad om te zeg.
Ba kolo, bozamisi, toh kuchokoparamenting.
Greetings to the leadership from parliament.
Spoke through the mic, oh, here come Rauniana because you won't hear you, it's not disrupting you with your mask, ne? Oriat.
Kij itumeling Joseph, kij member ya Kono CPA.
Well, I'm happy to be here. I am a member of the CPA.
Kono.
Kolo.
K O N O. N O.
Goeedag, mijn naam is Itumeling Joseph en ik kom van Kuno CPA af, des K O N O.
Kij, nialanyalim, mulautkowa fire national, fire amendment bill.
So I actually supported this in national amendment bill.
Ak ondersteun jerry nationale wijzigings wetsund waar.
Kono is onne artitiwan, onne khasa konyana municipality.
It's around this municipality.
Si, is around die khasa konya.
Is het bij argenen daar dat khasa konyani municipiteit jodde de jerry plaslike municipiteit?
Challenge, ya rona is a CPA, we, in, in, inso sa nyana ka amendment bill is muylongorin the responsibility of the landowner. It will be a big challenge.
The, the, the challenge that we have with regards to this amendment bill has got to do with the landowners, the problems when it comes to CPA, when we look into their responsibilities.
Die ei dagung wat ons bevind met jerry wetsund waar is die verant, verantwoordelijkheid van die grondeinaar, die verantwoordelijkheid wat helle moet draa.
Ntlakolo ilokoring, as a CPA, re grandilue le fatine, with nothing harane wa se pe training ya milelo.
The, the problem here is that as a CPA, we have, we have had land allocated to us, but along with that, we haven't been given anything, training or equipment, we don't have anything at all.
So as is CPA uit onze probleem, dat is voor ons grond gegeen, maar niks anders nie, dat is ie eenige touristen of geen opleiding aan ons verschkaaf nie.
Reno kilemu departmenting ya roneya agriculture, locally and provincially.
So we went to our department of agriculture locally and provincially.
Ons het na die plaslike in provinciale departement van landbouw gehad?
Jotse, kahore ipertusa, even le maspala ya rona, challenge ya tenki, kule fatiril muloneloku peki de green stone.
So the, none of these have actually helped us, the problem, the challenge that we have is that the whole land is full of gray stone.
So hier het ons gelat nie gehad, die ei dagung wat ons ons af bevind is dat het jerry helle orja vol greisklip is.
So, papa iti ninjelo kli, kli kosa mul, when it's hot, lip miloyakha.
So those who know this type of stone, it's a problematic stone because when it is very too hot, it ignites fire and then there will be felt fires.
So die mensen wat bewust is van jerry greisklip, weer dat as het bye warm rak, dan zal jerry klip dan aan die brandstek in dit workshop dan vuilbrande.
So from two thousand and two until last year, actually even this year, we're expecting fire. But from all the department of the government, we don't have a place to go or even thought to know who could help.
So kothla kafala ka two thousand and two, kothla kuhutlakajana, renseri, nalima tata emilelo, me renseri batatu, so mohong renseri sama ya kanku, linku, re bozar batlahu bona kahore marke batsho babasimba ba garitusa.
Vanaf toresentweed tot loosje, saus jerry or verwaag ons alke or brande, want ons weet nie waarin om te gaan nie, ons het van bakpoort naar stierpoort gesteer in ons weet nie wie ons kan helpen nie.
So, kantaya mile, re lu sa di camp, kuku onore is mu se kahore le, our fear this year is re limile mid, it, fire might start before we plow. So, please, I'm pleading with the parliament, can somebody look into that ring? We are trying as farming is a business.
So, bot tata bor nalibona kahore, re la kha kha lo akidi, tsakan taya milelo, re alima, me, eti moyarona, etse namukozinga jalo, kopayaro namo parlamenting kahore, rekopa kahore ritusa, laharka ritusa, konite batsho babi foota ya, di business se le jalo le jalo.
Ons vro als ze blij of jelle ons als ze blij kan helpen, ons is zelfs bang jerry or dat die vuilbrande gaan begin zelfs voor het ons slandige ploeg heet. So ak is pleidoo aan die parlement kan ie als ze blij ie te doen om ons te helpen.
Mo kij chere, written submission, e longoring, e bonza, di di campa, re di sa di sola panel, ho pompa metsi to.
So what I have here is a written submission that shows some of the camps that we have and the provisions of us being able to pump water that we need.
Ak die gescrewe inso wat ik wil geen dit verwaes na die soenkracht wat ons van gebruik maak voor die water wat ons zal norage hee om te pom.
Se si mu si abu helo singa se popa.
Then the last plea that I would like to make.
My laste pleidoo?
The fire ban, chance, challenge ya kahore, we can't use a grader, we knocked at the public works, they can't send a grader because of those gray stones.
Is be, is for us to be able to have a fire bridge, is the problem that we have is that we are not able to make it because we have not been able to have a grader sent to us that can be able to actually make the fire bridge simply because of the gray stones I referred to.
Ons ander probleem is ons kan ie een padscrapper in krij nie, want dit kies nie moontlik nie as gevol van jerry greisklip, kan nou sien een padscrapper in krij om jerry brandstek ik voor ons te maken nie.
Kalu kalu kalo leboch.
Thank you very much.
Bye dankie.
Thank you, Itumeling.
Dankie, Itumeling.
We do understand your concern.
Re kholabakafala tata, re cerecia di chalo tsaka, ra di talohanya.
Ons verstand nie bekomen is.
The beauty about it today, we are joined by the DDG, responsible for aggregate production, biosecurity and national resource management is in our midst. You will be able to respond to some of the issues.
Ons is gelukkig dat ie atjenk directeur gene rof van die ach, achri departementie is en is die of een productie, biosecurity en nationale hooproene.
Jalle ritlo kahore kahore tibukala matata awo, re kama kanyale, maloko abale, patalele maleba. Ela kahore 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 tibukala, kahore ritusa katu so ewya adilampala karo.
Over to you, Ted.
Good afternoon, Chairperson.
Dumela mudulasstulo.
Goeedag, voorscherter.
Afternoon to everyone.
Goeedag, namo.
Oh, you will go to that? Okay, fine. All right, I'm allowed here. Thank you. My name is Boyamabunza, I'm from Khasa Konyani Municipality.
Na kitoa koh Khasa Konyana Municipality, leader lameki.
Boyangabunza.
Bonhang?
Boyang.
Bonha?
Boyang.
Oh, boyang.
Yes.
Goeedag, mijn naam is Boyang.
How do you spell it?
Khasa Konyani.
I mean, how do you, you said Boi Ha.
Boi.
B O I?
H A N G.
Boyang.
B O I H A?
H A N G.
H A N G. Oi Ha.
Yes, it's not from here.
Mijn naam is Nifaniso en mijn naam is Boyang, Mobunza en ik kom van Khasa Konyani Municipiteit af.
Okay, thank you. Chairperson, I'm going to be short and maybe I should say this, I'm not against the bill.
Madula stulo kli koh kua kahore kutsuane kibata kahore kaya fano kahore kha kha, khatlanongle mulautkomo ono.
Voorscherter ak hanek kort lex prood ak is nie tiendie wetsund waar nie.
All right, thank you. Chairperson, I will quickly go back to our, one would say a correction, back to our leaders from the municipality.
Konale filankla innen kibata kahore bakanya, innen ibua karo namudulasstulo kaha maspala.
Ak han terugbeweg na rechtsstelling tu, wat verwaes ons laiers van die municipiteit af?
I have a problem with our municipality in terms of information sessions. Information.
Bot tata bor nalibona kahore ba maspala, kij kanyaho amokala se di moseto.
Ak het een probleem met ons municipiteit aan gande inlichting sessies?
Chairperson, if you can see that Khasa Konyana is mostly village-based areas.
Kita tokomela mudulasstulo kahore monu mo Khasa Konyana, di kalo te diinza bu du lo kij metse sela chaye.
Dus wat ie kan zien is jerry Khasa Konyani's bestriek is meer gebaseerd op kleiner gebiede.
Chairperson, our most people are not that much education now, ever we come to firefighting.
Kajalo baale banti ba ba akiba rona mudulasstulo, tata khasa batsho babarutefilenjano, ralema tatar tamokanyaya koloansamulelo.
Voorscherter ons mensen is nie opgelei as het kom bij brandbestrijding nie.
We have a problem whereby once we, like for example, we have been experiencing, I mean for a couple of years now, these fire, fire, these field fires in our communities.
Renalidinwaja di le maloanyana, renseru to kha kahore matata, ak kuruña khamilelo, eno ya na kha mudulasstulo.
Voor jelle porjor erfoor ons al jerry verschrikkelijke vuilbrande.
I wonder does our municipality not see that there is a problem somewhere within our community, more specifically in our villages?
Kajalo kiyposa kahore atata maspala kha, konohu bona kahore konale matata, mo kara kaba akiba we, se kolo bu kolo, mo le filonler na mo kolo.
Ak wunder al dat ons municipiteit nie kan zien of dat ons probleem heet voor al ons klein dorpis nie.
We have been experiencing fires in our fields whereby the fire exceed, we call maybe for, one would say for a whole week, fire has been burning for the whole week. We call upon the department of fire, no one responds to the, to, to, to the request.
Sorry, nila le matata ak kuruña khamilelo, en mohong innen ituka se bakasa beke yo, renseru kuamo koserokopa ritusa, me kusna opayo aravela.
Want ons vuilbrande erfoor saus is het voor een week lang, ons bal, ons bal die departement, ons bal mensen om ons te komen helpen, maar niemand antwoord ons nie.
We have lost lot of livestock, that is uncountable, people are, people who are depending on those livestock. But I wonder if the municipality can at least come up with a plan whereby to engage with the community, to lecture the, the youth that we are talking about, about how to fight these fires whenever they arises.
Kajalo matata arnilen lo na kahore, re la kha khetu kidi ruu, wata rona te diinzi, mira iposa kahore, mama imong anzinjalo, atata maspala kha oboni, akha pakikabakohna koh, tla mo koh ronakoh, tahu buisanale ronakadi khanza kahore, hamulelo uruña, roron tsakasela inzinjaa.
Ons het al on talboro anta of fire verloer, en ik wunder of jerry municipaat met de plan kan voor kom om jerry gemeenschap interlig, om jong mensen bewust te maken in leer hoe om jerry vuilbrande te blis.
I do hear some of the present, some of the present, the president that have been talking here from the other municipalities says that they have a programs in places. But I'm really shocked to hear that there is such things that are taking place in our municipalities because we don't see them, they are not engaging us with those, in those kind of projects that are taking place.
So kia khamala, hakju kahore naliba thobango koh, tokokoh maspala bare, konali di tulaxanya, te di tomilwen, te ilon kahore di beraka na lo kuh tibela milelo, rona renseru nalima tata kadina kotsotse, kajalo sekese bona fano faki kahore tata kaba buisanale rona, kaba arbolale se pe kaha di wetsendinjaro, konali po tata, kamanzama, mo le filonler na mo kolo.
Ak is geskook om te weer dat die program is van, van die municipiteiten, want ons weet nie van nie, ons zien nie jerry mensen nie.
If maybe I can suggest, let's have notice boards, at least once in a while we go to towns, so that once we get the opportunity to go to town, so that we can see this information when does it happens and where.
Me reka stitinya lo ksa justa kahore, kongwe renelidi notice board, di plaki we kuma filon axonale kotoropong, kora haraya kotoropong, re konohu leba, rebera kahore konohu bona kahore di projecte, te nu di ahu di re kha kai ling, re re kahore koh ya loro.
My voorschouw so via sa dro, kene scheming bordie nie dood geplas word, so wanner ons inkom doortu dat ons kan gaan naar jerry bordu en zien waar en wanneer jerry program is al plasvend.
If that's, maybe if that's impossible, we do have community leaders, give them the information, let them work, let them bring the information to us. We do have youth that are willing to do something about this, but they don't have the skills, they don't have experiences.
Me hai lo kahore so khasa konya, re tlako pa kahore, se di moseto kaha seno inne we, bayte di di, ele ba rona ba nanle bo, ne, inne bo, ne, batla kahore bolala, kahore kha kisa kahore, kuh di re kha, dangmo, monching inzinjalo, kajalo seno se katu sa, fela bu tata bor nanle bo ne ka bo, kia kahore kaba runwa, kaba trainiwa, kaba na di skills, za kuh di ra diro ya koloansamulelo.
As dit ontmooontlik is, ons heet gemeenschapslaiers, lig helle in, laat helle die inlichting breng naar die mensen tu, ons heet jeugdigte is, maar jerry mensen heet nie die vaardigheden of die ervaring nie.
Chairperson, I myself, I was shocked yesterday when I found this, this invitation to this, this workshop.
E mudulasstulo, kileka tsoka, kaha khamala ma ba, hakje na kiamokala talizo, ya koh tamokopano, eno ya kumpien.
Voorscherter ak was geskook tu ak gestrieuit uit norage en gekrij, voor jerry vergadering.
It's my privilege to be here, but I'm not quite sure that is a really, is a privilege because I was less informed about this information. One need to be really informed to prepare himself because here I'm talking, maybe I'm talking invitable, I'm talking little bit there and there, but I was not, I was not ready for this, for this session.
Itumela kahore bu kile fa, men kai leta kahore mona kon etan, renne we te di moseto kabotalo, kon e jano jana kile kahore buadiin tsa, kij tshara faki, trokela faki, tshara falele fale, hakikaboki amoketse te di moseto kabotalo, kothla kafala koh timolo kong, konye ne kitlaku buadilo te diinze, te di nalakalohanya senke.
Voorscherter is my voorrag om ie te wies vandaag, maar ik weet nog niet eigenlijk of het zo groot voorrag is nie, want ak heet nie met die norage inlichting hierin gekomen nie. As die mensen kan uitkom en me meer inlicht, dan dik geweet wat ie aan gaan, ak is nie voorbereid om ie te wies nie.
Another thing, Chairperson, that you can see on the floor, we don't have people here, one will have to ask yourself why. We don't have representatives from our communities in our.
Se si nso kahore konohu so bona mudulasstulo, kantense kibua kahore, ya ka hauka leba, harana di buitete diu kete kirete batla kuh bu, seno se tsapose ya kahore, reun konsenjalo.
En voorscherter ik kan zien, iso, die mensen is nie iso nie, en die moet ie saafie, die vraag afro, waar go kom, die gemeenschapsse 14-wordigers is nie nie.
One would say is lack of communication.
Kajalo seno se kahore kahore kij kha lo, ya koh sa ne we te di moseto.
Iemand kan say sete kort aan inlichting of communicatie?
The time, the, 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 the time management, yeah, 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 workshop here.
Le, zela ewna ko idriso kaya ne kahore, ko kano eka te nakana ko man.
En die tijdspeesier van jerry werk zwankel?
Let's try to do things in a good fashion, Chairperson, two, four, five days in advance, so that we can communicate, get the relevant representatives from our community to come and speak about these issues, because these are issues that are affecting us heavily in our communities. to come and speak about these issues, because these are issues that are affecting us heavily in our communities.
Kan ons dit is het blijf tenminste twee tot vier daag kenniskrijf voor die tijd, waar is sike vergaderings? Wat ons die relevante mensen kan krijver die nodige inlichting heet, zo dat helle ons gemeenschap kan kom fittenwoordig en i te kom praat.
Lastly, Chairperson.
Lastens, voorjeter?
I don't think even my chief knows that I'm here. He will be surprised to find out that I'm representing our community. So this is a real concern. I'm calling from the municipality to the higher structures, please take us for... take us seriously. We are seriously, we are jobless, we got youth out there that are doing nothing. There's why sometimes you can see that we have this problem of crimes, because youths are doing nothing.
Vorjeter, ach is seker mijn stam hoef gaan ook verbalswees om te weer dat aqui is, want hij weet nie eerste, nie. En ach ons is pe komer daag wer. Nemo's is het blijf aransdag op, van die municipale vlak af tot boertu. Nemo's aransdag op, want ons heet jeugdigte is iso wat werkloos is. Ons het groot meest tot seifer, ons moet iets die nou met antespreer.
We would love to have activities within our communities, Chairperson.
Ons zo graag activiteiten in ons gemeenschap wil ei voorjeter.
We are bored, one will say that, we are very much bored. So give us something that even we have to volunteer. That means we are gaining experience from something, something like this, this kind of platform, we need them, but we can't, they are not accessible.
I see you've got so much to say. I wish you had all the day for yourself, and you have raised valuable inputs. If you want to write more, there's a lega there, a lega raise your hand, you can submit in writing.
Ach weet ik baai om te zijn, als je nog enige opinies wil oper, als het blijf schrijf voor ons daag wer.
Okay, you can proceed.
Greetings, Honorels. Thank you very much for this opportunity that has been given me. My name is Churchill.
Baai dankie voor die gelient, wat even mij gegeet, my name is Goetjman, Tebeja Pelo, Churchill, en baai dankie voor die gelient.
And then, I'm coming from Joomurulung municipality.
Esperanza Village.
Esperanza Village.
Ach kom van Esperanza Village, en dit is van die Joomurulung municipality.
I'm a member of the Janki Tribal Council, I'm a member of that particular council.
Ach is het let van die Janki stam? Stamrod?
Baha Janki Tribal Council.
Baha Janki.
Baha Janki Tribal Council. So in what seven of Joomurulung, I am the Chairperson there.
Ach si voorjeter van Joomurulung is vaak siewe?
Secretariat Rainbow Farmers Union.
And then I'm also the Secretary of the Rainbow Farmers Union.
Ach is ook die secretaris van the Rainbow Farmers Union?
Thank you very much for your being here. I would like to say that we have always complained a lot of time to say that with regard to most of the South African laws that we have are the laws which the government put in place unilaterally without consultations.
Ach weet ik baai dankie sere die tienwoordig is iso. Ons klaar gereeld om te say die weten van South Africa is weten wat die regering eenporag inlatre heet.
So let me say that just from way back in ninety-four, let's try and start afresh so that we can have such like consultations. By the time when our government was being put into power, we were very, very excited and obviously hoping that there will be tremendous consultations between you and yourselves. But let's try and start this afresh, let's see more consultations.
Vanaf vierde negentig af, van jiri nieuwe regering ingetreed, en dat was vaars consultaties was gebeurd. Ons gedink jiri nieuwe regering, ons gaan baai blij wies dat helle met ons kom consultantieren, met ons kom praat. Kom ons als het blijf begin wer, kom ons doen dit soe.
Because sometimes when you look into a constitution, you look at some laws and then you wonder to yourself, but these people who made these laws, what were they thinking?
Want betekent as een mens kijk naar die grondweter, met mens kijk naar die weteroper en denk met we zelf, wat het met die mensen angegaan, wat het helle gedink?
So right now, for example, like the act related to abortions, this doesn't make sense.
Zo is bijvoorbeeld die wet ongane abortion, dit maak glad nie sani.
We are sober minded now, so that each and everyone can participate when coming to our constitution.
So I'm appealing that we must go and sit down now.
Zo voor het amel nou zo kan sit en opkop kan wies en kan deelneem aan jiri proces.
So the twenty years that have gone by now have taught something, we learned something, so now it's time to sit down and consult.
Achtentwintig jaar wat nou voorbij is, heet ons iets geleer, dus nou tijd om te sit en mekaar te praat.
So when it comes to the matters related to fire...
As dit nou kombe die kwesties van brandde?
Our concern is that our environment is very unclean.
Ons bekommers is dat ons omgeving baai feil is.
So by the time when the fire erupts, the plastics, the pampas, all of these things that are all over actually contribute to the fire being difficult to control.
Wanneer de brand begin, is die plasties en die duke wat bijdraad tot jiri brand wat zo verschrikkelijk is? En wat het baai moeilijk maak om jiri brand te blis.
So I would like to appeal to say that fathers must please show the mothers how to dispose the pampas. And if they refuse, then some steps must be taken against these mothers.
Zo my playdoe is dat die paas moet voor die maas wijst, we ruim en wat die rechte manier is om jiri duke weg te gooien. En als helle ander met verkeer te doen, mora stappen geniem wordt hier nella.
So one other, the second one will be the fact that we would like the traditional leaders to make sure that their constituency is very, very clean and then they must also come up with some plans that will actually keep their villages spotless and clean.
Die tweere punt wat ach wil maak is dat ons traditionele laiers moet seker maak dat helle areas schoen is. En moet ook plane geniem wordt om te verschikre jiri areas schoen blai.
So when it comes to our members of the community, if they are not interested in taking part in seeing to eat that it's very, very clean within their community, and maybe these are the people who are receiving grant, that grant must be discontinued.
As talleder van ons gemeenschap is wat nie verschikre dat de areas schoen gaan word nie, en jiri mensen ontvang regeringsduelag, moet jiri duelag van helle awagen in word.
So villages, great and small, must each have ten people who have been well trained in the control of fire.
Dorpies groot en klein moet tiende mensen he, wat opgelei is om weer hoe jiri brandde te bestrij.
And then we would also like the equipment for putting out fire to be stored at the place of the traditional leaders just as we have shovels, stored at their place which are used for digging the graves.
Dan wil ik voor dat toeristing wat gebruikt word om jiri brand te blis, bij die traditionele laiers gebaar moet word. Neeze wat ons die graven en nie dobares, so wat ons ons mensen begraven.
And then these people who have been trained, they must be retrained after every twelve months. And then at that particular time, there must be some stipend so that they cannot become disheartened, they must see the fruits of what they're doing.
Dan ook die mensen wat opgelei moet word, moet elke twaalf monde haar opleiding ontvang. Jiri mensen moet elke duelag ontvang, zo dat helle full, dat helle iets bereik heet voor die werk wat helle doen.
So we would like to make sure that in our camps, there are fire belts or bridges to make sure that when fire erupts, it doesn't cross over into the place where we don't want it.
Ons moet ook verschikre dat brandstoek is in ons, om ons areas, so as to a foutbrandde is dat die fout niet kan, of jiri brand nie kan spring, nou areas ons het nie volen.
We would like the municipality, the farmers' union, and the traditional leaders to cooperate when it comes to fighting fire.
Ons wil jiri municipality die boerenvereniging en die traditionele laiers moet bij mekaar kom as dit nou kom bij brandde blis.
So the fires' unions must be given the trucks so that when fire erupts, they can be able to get to where it is speedily.
Die boerenvereniging moet trokke gegeer word, zo dat helle wanner dat een foutbrandde is, finnig takin uitkom. Hoeveel punt heet die wer?
Net two.
Two, wrap up, I have taken too much time. You can also reduce those stuff in writing, eh? Their forms to complete.
Okay. There must be recycling factories in each local municipality so that people can be encouraged to pick up their dirty soil for money, that will help us to have our environment clean.
Dan moet ook haar winningsfabrike wies en alko dorp, zo dat die mensen geld kan verdienen wanner helle rommel op tal ingaan haar win.
When coming to interaction, a barrier, a language, sometimes is a barrier, thank you very much.
And then the last one, I would like to make an appeal to the Department of Lower Education to make sure that Sichuan and Africans are compulsory, and then so that we can be able to interact. It's not, because sometimes the problem is that the white-skinned people who speak Afrikaans, sometimes they seem to think that they are superior over those of the dark-skinned color. But really, that is not the point, the point here has to be, let's be able to interact because of the language. Otherwise, we continue to have a language barrier. That was my last point, and thank you very much.
Dan wil ik ook voor dat applydoe aan die departement voor onderwijs om te verschikre dat Afrikaans en Sichuan verplichtend is. Zo dat ons interactie kan heem met mekaar. Want ons baai van die wit mensen wat niet Afrikaans praat, wat denk helle is beter als die donker mensen. Maar ons met die interactie, ons kan samen met mekaar kom om tal te praat. Als die mensen nie tal kan verstand nie, is dit de strijkoblok. That's my last point, baai dankie.
Let me thank you very much, Program Director. All the Honorels here present who are our guests.
Baai dankie aan die programdirecteer en amel eerlijke mensen, eerbare mensen wat die tienwoordig is vandaag.
And ladies and gentlemen who have come to attend our gathering today.
En die domme snyeren wat vandaag bij ons ansleikt.
I'm very, very grateful for this day of the eleventh of June to be having parents here in front of us.
Elfde juni wat vandaag is, zo dat ons jiri ouwer, ouwers hier voor ons kan heem.
So the thing is that when a parent arrives on a particular day, you know very well that if you have been crying, now you're going to stop crying.
Mens weet al dat als je ouwers op een specifieke dag ankom, nie gaal wer iets, gaan je baai vanh opwaal.
I was very grateful when I was listening to the opening, when the chair was actually speaking and saying that the reason why they are here is to come to discuss the amendment bill that has got to do with furt and forest fires.
Ach was baai dank om die opening, wat die voorjeter geseed, ons gaan praat over die wijzigingswetzont werk, wat gaan hoor fout in bosbrandde.
I was very in a hurry actually with this particular subject, to the point that I even forgot to introduce to you to say who I am and where I'm coming from.
Ach was zo aastag met die specifieke voorwerp, maar ach zelfs vergeten om mijzelf aan die voor te staal.
The fact is that I was trying to keep up with the time.
Die feit van die soek is ach het probeer bij die tijd.
My biggest problem is the felt fire which gets ignited every year.
Maar grootste probleem is die foutbrandde wat elke jaar angesteek word.
Where I live, we used to have fire extinguishers. They packed up and then we took them to the municipality for repair, but they failed to repair those.
Wa ach woon heet ons brandblisers gehad, en is alles opgeniem en is in die municipality tegevat, maar helle kon dit nie raag maak nie.
Meaning that right now should there be fire in our community.
Dit beteken as on nou een brandzoop plasvind in ons gemeenschap.
Karena di timamolelo, ri tima kama bo, kore kekadi kare, kore reho kutimamole.
So we don't actually have fire extinguishers. So what we have to do, we have to try and put it out with our bare hands. We cut the branches of the trees to use them as fire extinguishers.
Oos heet, heidig ik geen brandplesers nie, so ons moet het met ons hande blis. So ons kap sals van die takke van die boema af, so dat ons probeer om hier die vier te blis.
Riaku pa ba ta di.
So as our parents, we are appealing to you.
As ons ouers is hier die applaiedo aan i.
Ri thusein, kadi stima molelo.
Please help us with fire extinguishers.
Help ons as de belief met brandplesers.
Ri thusein, le kahu dira di fire belt eh, mo di thoko kadi trata, serena leto.
Please help us also by making and forming fire belts, you know, along the streets of the places where we reside.
Help ons ook om een brandstrok te maak, om die straat en die plekken waar ons woen.
Ha koo shako korona, kua ha kosi peju.
So when there is fire in our eh, community eh, in our, under our chi, our chief.
As tal brand is in ons gemeenschap onder ons tamhoef?
Kua kote zana le kudi plasin, serena leto, net ako Boerland.
So it spreads right up to some of the fires that we have at Boerland.
Dit verspreid naas van die brande wat ons heet in Boerland.
Rekere ri thusei ke ba shewu baba ba pele le rona, kaba na le di stima mole.
People who would help us in that situation are some of the white people who are actually almost our neighbors.
Die mensen wat ons help in hier die situatie is die wit mensen wat langs ons is, wat umtrent ons bieren is.
Monga kengol, hitilo ngolo wa twenty twenty.
In the past eh, twenty twenty.
In twintig twintig?
Ko Boerland, da hui leha, shalore lore, rabara salari pukli.
There got to be so much fire in Boerland and we were helpless. We couldn't do anything about it.
Toevas so veel brande in Boerland gewes, ons was helpeloos, ons kon niks daar word doen nie.
Rabara ta reta bohe te ha, ha grigalchar, hanwa, offici hanwa re re, akongha kati ba kusia hela kadi fuunya.
And then we rushed to the Office of Agriculture to see if they don't have the portable ones by which they could help us.
Oos het ook jah na die Departement Landbouwsekanter het doen te kijk, of wil nie van hier die brandplesers heet, om wat ons te help nie.
Ko bohele long ratoka tucho.
And then at the end, we actually didn't have any help.
Hoop je ouheen het ons geen opgekerheid nie.
Mo li ukulaka la bo hev.
In my last word, I'd like to put in.
Laste wat ak wil see?
Kabat ta di ba khorohiye jan, akho skachatla kona dia lol silelo samolero senaha.
We'd like to say to you as our parents that let it be that there shall never be a complaint about fire.
As ons ouers fro ons fiel, ladon nooit weer ek lacht, dan kan wie es, weer branden nie.
Rezela kati motuha koshile ikonomio.
Our life actually depends on agriculture. If there is fire, we are done.
Ons levensmag sato plantbau, en as tal brand is, dan is het voorbij met ons.
Um kukule motan maisha tiro.
Have you heard me, eh, program director?
Heet i ma houver, die programdirkteer?
Thank you very much.
Bye danke.
No, reli kuile pap.
We, we heard you very well.
Oos het hi houver.
So well, you've been eloquent and we love the passion when you deal with this matter.
Ok leke, u gamonade, ri tumele zipuaya ka.
It's bye moeche bro dat ons var di eri passi.
Ra halivo. Chileka, that's your guest.
Chileka, dois ichas.
Dumela ba kai cho.
Eh, greetings.
Hui adag.
Eh, yo buanyoke Simon Cairo Le Seruani.
So speaking here is Simon Le Seruani.
Ak is Simon Le Seruani.
Maspalewa Jomoralong Kote Chidi.
So I'm from the Jomoralong Municipality.
Ak kom van die Jomoralong Municipiteit.
De MZ Flasiya Panda Didi Project.
So I am representing the farm called Panda Didi.
Ak vertien enwoordig die plas wat genume word Penda Didi.
Ki lewa ka tata, ha ba parlament eh, ba ti le mo korona, ba ta korama kale hoko.
I'm very grateful that the parliamentarians have come here to, to come and address us.
Ak is bye dank por dat leerde van die parlement hierin gekom ek, om ons toe te spreek.
Ki mo jo, setabelo ba baba, goye ba lenkhor, ba kri le molelo kudi plasinsa bole.
So I am here representing some other people who experienced fire in their farms.
Ak is hi en ak vertien enwoordig ander mensen wat brande op de plas er voor.
Moye lenkhor, ri le ra reporter, mo department ding.
We did report that incident at the department.
Oos heet die incident aan die Departement geraporteer?
Ka ba ta ba re tusaka sipi.
They didn't help us in any way.
En het ons glad nie gehaald nie.
So ti ha le boha kumpio na hati le mongwe, wa ba to baba ba ta abuwa ng.
So I'm very grateful for today to be one of the people who will make a presentation.
Ak is bye dank por om vandaag een van die mensen te wees wat hi so een voorlegging kan anbied.
Korabapa lamente, maskaba tela ma hala mo korona.
So that the parliamentarians don't come here for nothing.
So dat die mensen van die parlement nie van niks hierin kom nie.
Ka ora na kote di kuwe, halo ba ta ma emo, lo ta mo korona, resa sholo hela.
Because sometimes when you want to be appointed to some positions, you come to us unannounced.
Want wanneer i betekir angestaal moet word in positions, dan kom i zonder enige warske van na ons toe.
Sekese kopanje kopagore, abare prowayde, ka training, korona ba di farmer.
So what I would like to, to ask for is for us farmers to be trained.
Wa voor ak fro is er al opleidinggebied moet word voor die boeren.
Mo di plasinta rona, karena mezi.
We don't have water in our farms.
Oos heet die water op ons plas nie.
Pusho kai ri lehaile sipi, kadi te la za ro.
The government is not doing anything about our roads.
Die regering doe niks weer ons paay nie.
Khonale parolo kanyoma karin, ka di plasita kuma kain, le di project.
There is a huge difference between the farms in the villages and the projects.
Dat is een groot verschilt tussen die plas en die doorpes en in die projekte.
Ko plasine kielong kohweyone ke patala kangwa ka, ko plasine eke na kohweyon, ke patala plasiwa kangwa ka.
Eh, the farm where I live, so that gets to be paid annually.
Die plas wa ak won word jaarlijks betaal.
Koraya kore, pusho enale maikarabelo ka plasiyo wa.
That, this means that the government has got a responsibility with regard to this farm.
Dit beteken die regering is verantwoordelijk voor hier die plas.
Hamolelo uru nyako plasin, pusho eto ne teata maikarabel, kadi ruo lelo ko plasin yo wa.
When there, there comes to be fire in the farm, the government is supposed to shoulder responsibility with regard to what happens to the livestock.
Wanneer er een brand op de plas is, is die regeringse verantwoordelijk uit om te verzeker dat die vier beskarren word.
Ka twenty eighteen rekrele molelo ko plasin.
We had fire in our farm in twenty eighteen.
In twintig achtti doos een brand op ons plas gehad?
Rafo ne na Obama Sepala, le fire fighter.
And then we made a call to the municipality for firefighters.
Oos heet, die municipiteit gebellige fro, verbrandbestrijder.
Karata ra bo na tucho.
So we didn't receive any help.
Oos het geen op ontvang nie.
Ka ba ta ba ya kohrona ba le fa pa, ba ya koshaba koronolo kusitu gin.
The department did not come to us to come and diagnose the cause of fire.
Die Departement heet nie na ons toe gekom om te diagnoseer waar die oorzaak van die brand was.
Koraya kore, kaba na sipi.
So that means they just don't care.
Dit beteken, helle geen heet nie om nie.
Kadi plasita Pendale te di.
With eh, Panda Farms and others.
Helle geen nie om waar die Panda plas of ander nie.
Ba itore ba mo maemon, abale mo kohoni.
They, they know that as long as they are, have occupied the positions in which they are.
Helle weet so langs is wat de lea die positions beklee waar de lea nou is.
Karo na le ruola ro.
And then through us and our livestock.
En hier ons en ons vier.
Ma di aba mo kelaan.
The, the, the money they earn.
Die geld wat de lea verdien.
Ba mo kala karona ba di plas.
So they receive the earnings because of us, the farmers.
Helle verdien geld als gevoel van ons die boeren.
Mo molelong onum chasit.
So the, in, with regard to the fire that was raging.
As ons een verwijst naar die brand wat ons gehad eh?
Ki la ta gehetri, ki di komo di di seventy, seventy six.
I lost seventy six cows.
Ak is seizendzeventig biester verloer.
Ki la ta gehetri, ki, ki di bo di 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 eighty five.
And then I lost eighty five goats.
Ak heet vijfentachtig boerboker verloer.
It means ki la ta gehetri, ki, three eight, eh, three million, hadi dakwa kautelitas nie.
So calculating my loss, it means I have lost three million rains.
As die mensen me verliese op tal is, so word die drie miljoen rand wat ik verloer heet.
En na obo na kisnke ki le mo sha, hadi dakwa ta di.
And then I'm still young, I'm an emerging fire, farmer.
Ak is steeds jong, ak's ondlike in de boer.
Pusho kasa ka itusi sipi leka fur.
So the government did not do anything about that.
Die regering heet niks aan gedoen nie.
Renren tan ma di mo di katane, kene, kene tan ma di mo katane, ko furu te di talite.
So they didn't do anything with eh, sorry, furu, what is furu?
Catel feedi.
Animal feed, yes. So they didn't do anything with animal feed, and then I had to actually take money out of my own pocket to care for that.
Helle niks gedoen vervoer voor die dieren nie, en ak moes geld uit mijn eie zak uitvaat, om de betover te betaal.
Le bo ra ma yamo abo sabai so rekatunde eighteen, ne kono kore luwa ya.
And then even the climatologists know how difficult it was eh, in twenty eighteen.
Salfs die klimatuwe verstand hoe moeilijk het was in twintig achtti.
Li ruo, ha one, mongwa li ruo.
So if you own livestock.
So as i vier besit.
Ohona le tali lelela mo kwaye na olemo.
And then you.
Le tali lelela mo kwaye na.
And then the, this livestock actually is looking up to you to care for it.
Hier die vier verwaag van i om na le de zorg.
Wizer kona li singwa, sesasiama.
Then you should know that something is not going so well.
En die mensen wit weet, iets gaan nie dag goed nie.
It means pusho ya rona, kaya ri re le senke.
And this is also, and that would mean that our government is not really doing what it should.
En dit beteken ons regering doe nie eigenlijk wat de lea moet nie.
So telebo kela, halo leha kumpio no.
I thank you for your presence anyway.
Bedanki, ak bedanki voor die enwoordigheid.
As lelo sarona, eska sa na sali hela.
So we wish our complaints will not fall into deaf ears.
En ons hoop nie ons klacht is al op doorwe oere fal nie.
Ra ya mbaa, lobahirilen, lobare lore.
So can you please say to those who dispatched you?
Kan eerste briefen die mensen see wat i gestier heet?
Simon Le Seruani are.
This is what Simon Le Seruani says.
Dit is wat Simon Le Seruani say.
Ka ba ri du re le senke.
They are not taking care of us.
Toevas word nie na ons gekijk nie.
Aba ta ma emo di plasin ba shebe.
So let them come and walk about in our farms and have a look.
Lattele kom en dat de lea op ons plas, plas kom rondloop en kom kijk waar al an gaan.
Basaka ba bua, ba le mo di ekono, le mo di tilo.
They mustn't only speak from the telephones and from, from sitting on the chairs.
Ba re tele, ba kore boon.
Helle moet nie van de le fone afpraten, van de le stula afnie, helle moet kom kijk.
But we'd like them to come out and go and have a first-hand experience.
De shulala kore, mo du la si tilo, on chebele umme. De shulala me on chebeleka, flag ya, kefe ya, in si.
So I hope that the lady wearing South African flag who has been looking at me.
On chebele ma, ka wan chebele, on, on chebele kundu.
Eh, you are looking at me so as to want to help me.
Eska ware, ha o twa ha.
Ak hoop die dames met die flag om on ak, so wat voor me kijk, ak hoop i so me kanal.
May it be that when you leave here.
Obo jo re, ka ba, ba kurumaneki ba kohela komora.
And then you walk away thinking, I'm going to forget about Kuruman now.
As i werk gaan vandaag, moet die den.
Bon ti bu diya alu.
So don't, don't do that.
Munidet du nie.
Ka man twa ka lo, ti alibo.
So with those words, I want to say thank you.
Medore woe de voelakse bye danke.
Ak kozoo iluwe te.
May peace abound to you.
Mach, je le freer de befent.
But the second is that you are forced to respond to. I'm the person that said we were here to listen to you earlier. We don't practice double standards.
Eh, rebatla kohotokamela kore tota, refanu kohotla kore etza ro na, ibile, te kanyeto, ei, ei beilwen nyabo la o tota, ka rabatla hui di kala kohotlase.
Iets wat ik wel moet nummen is dat ak is, ak heet gesee, ak is die persoon wat hier is om na i te laister. En ons het nie dubbelstandaarden nie.
We can assure you, that's why some of us are seated here, but we are not even moving, because we're trying to even record everything that you say.
Dit is ook om ons die voorstatter, ons beweer geskaas, en ons is bezig om alles wat i see obteinie.
I didn't, I didn't get that shit.
We are typing, but we are recording what you are saying. We are here to listen to you.
As, as i seen ons is bezig om dit tek, dan weet die ons is bezig om nooit as te maak van wat i see.
Okay, yeah.
There's no, you shouldn't be worried that we are listening to you all of you.
So rokopa kore, eh, les ken la tsunyeha, tata ba kai cho, eh, mo du la si tilo are, lobare di ze, ibile ba ta ya di ka.
Sorry, it's not directed to you. I was trying to respond to some of the issues that the previous speaker was saying. You are protected. I'm giving you this platform to say whatever you want to say.
Thank you. Eh, good morning, members of parliament, eh, the chair.
Ki alibo ha, eh, madume, koma lo ko aparlamente, le mo du la stulo.
Hui morre dames en jeren, leerde van die parlement en die voorstatter.
I must also greet my mayor.
Ki ba ta, kufiti sa madume, le ho, mayor ra warona.
Ak ook krah my burgirmester krut.
My name is Tami Melokwe. I'm the director for community services in Jomoralong Local Municipality.
Ni na la meke Tami, meke namu te le di pele, karangaba, ach, mo Jomoralong eh, Municipality.
My name is Tami Melokwe, ak is die laier voor gemeenschapszaken in die Jomoralong Municipiteit.
Some of the issues that I would want to raise, the mayor has raised them.
Eh, khonale ma chata man, ak kringi ba ta kwa, zo sa mile kala eh, mayor osa ta kisite.
Die burgirmester het reeds van die items wat ik graafel besprek genume.
The first issue is, I agree to the amendment.
Ni tlayan, ni tlaya ba ta kwa, tlaya sa kore ki dumala na le molao kromo.
Yersdins wil ik nummen dat ak salms de medie wijzigings.
But what also the bill is silent about is the funding.
Me eh, khonale se, we se molao kromo, osa buingasona, me se oki, ko tere di waga ma di, le koele la tere so ya ma di.
Maar wat ik wel ook wil uitleg is dat die wetzond waarst still is of daar geen noemensgemalkes van bevoensing nie.
Jomoralong is very vast, and we have the working on fire team, like the mayor said.
Di lo mo Jomoralong, ni di ra kaka bo na, ko ibeler na le so chapa sapwa, chapa ba loan sang melelo, yakaha, mayora atalusi te.
Jomoralong is een ba groot area, en ons heet die working on fire team, of ei span wat aan brande werk, maar dit is, dit is nog nie waar moet wees nie.
I, I want to correct the English version, the Sichuan version. Jomoralong is vast, korah kore dona, ik kro.
Oh, Jomoralong is too big, sorry, not vast, vast.
Yes.
Sorry.
Jomoralong is een groot gebied.
And as we speak, we've got the team stationed at the main office. We have three satellite offices and we do not have the team of working on fire stationed at them.
Mer na li di teishine, mer na li eh, the satellites eh, stationsa kutimamolelo mo koto ne, eh, mo ma filo na.
Oos heet die WIF span, in da net os ook drie satellits eh, stasis, maar ons heet nie die spanne wat word op aale kan werk nie.
We, we struggle to reach other areas because one of the furthest areas is Van Selsres, hundred and eighty kilometers from the municipal offices.
Mer na le ma chata, akufiti la ma filo, amma, we kalabakala kore, le lengla, le filo, le kilo ma kilo, le bo kakala ba one hundred and eighty kilometers, koya kufita koholo.
Oos sekkel om bij al die gebiede te kan uitkom, want een van die gebiede is bij voorbeeld van Selsres, wat bijna honderdentachtig kilometer far wag is van die WIF stasi.
We do not have a team stationed there. Now, when we get a fire call, it would take us two to three hours to arrive in Van Selsres.
Karana di teishine sa ba timamolelo, baba, ba, ba na baiki kereisa kadi nakutsutu, me, harikriya, mo kosi wa kora kota kilo molelo, kora za di uradika na tuh, koya kota taro, kora rifiti koe molelo taka li nte.
Oos het nie satellinspan nabae aan Van Selsres nie, so wanneer daar oprup is verenuit in een brand, so dat ons bijna twee toe drie iren nie om, on piette word tot die area.
So the absorption of the working on fire team into the municipality as a fire unit would assist for us to be able to attend to fires quickly.
Ka yalo kui heroa, ka ba to baba katsewa, mo te, ka masapala, yakabati mamolelo. To ta ki khonle kota tuhsa mfe la ta ta, kora rokhonle kutsibukela, kota kha kha melelo, eri bilé di wa kora riya kutsu sakayo.
So om hier die eh, brandspanne te absorbiere in die municipiteit.
...weizigingswetzondwerp voorwege wordt, dat dit ook een oorinstemming is en consequent is met die bestaande municipale verordeningen en ordenances.
My concern comes with whether we will realize the objectives of the bill once enacted. My reason is that there is lack of law enforcement emanating from the executive arm of government.
Na kwetso ekel lemukilen kohore ana ekabar tokhona kore ruud odire sente amulawo, kahore lemukile kore kwedho, ke kore baw balimopuso abakhono baba berkan ka amulawo, abakhono kore bakadira merako owa kore barituse kamelewana eswanangli eyu.
Ekis bekommert of hier die doelstelling van hieri wetzondwerp verwesendlik zal kan worden, al gezien daar bije la weidstupassing plaatsvind op iwe omdlik?
We need our departments to work together in the spirit of IGR and cooperative government to ensure that the objectives of the act when it is enacted are being realized.
Kopa kore honeli tirisa nos kolo ka buso tara kanelo, kore rekona kore rifikela maika elo amulawo tumo oka mko olenkate.
Departementemut saamwerk en iwe geest van cooperative regering en integratie om te verschrikkeren dat hieri doelstelling van die weizigingswetzondwerp wel geïmplementeer en verwesendlik kan worden.
I would also like to bring to the committee regarding clause two which is proposed to put the responsibility primarily on the department as a custodian, to be responsible for the association so that it actively participates.
Ne kira ta kohutakisa se kolesu tonnamo khaulong eyu ya bubedi kore lefapa eswanse kore leruso maika rabelo, ah kore inebo na ba zamaisan, ba zamaisan di se retamar du melanikasona lisewse lente mo amulawo.
Ekwa graag fookis op conclusieletu ye, waar die verantwoordelijkheid aan iwe departement geplasword om die beschermer te wies, om te verschrikkeren dat actieve deelnamen plaatsvind.
And that it forms part of their key performance area and they be assessed on it.
Le kore ine karolo ya di tiru le maika rabelo abona, le kore rekona kore relebelo kore ana ba dira di tiru abona kamokho kolenkate koya kamulawo tumo.
En daare deelforum van helle sleet op restasi indikasis of kapi is susuzet ken waar opadage aseseer word.
I would also like to bring to the committee that as hassechonjana we will definitely support the realization of the act.
Ke rataku takisa kape kore rona ya kamaspa la was hassechonjana, retohune defaza kore rekona kore rifikela maika elo amulawo.
Ekwa het graag wknemdat as hassechonjana municipality zal ons wel die verwesendlik van hieri weid unersteer.
Currently as the municipality we are building a fire station which our mayor would usually call it a state of the arts fire station and we would like to urge the committee as Joe Morolon has also indicated that we will need support to ensure that the fire station has capacity in terms of personnel and so that we are able to render quality service to our people.
Koneya nungre akas eteshenisa batimamolelo, retohuko pa kore kamokho ilenkate kore lefapa lekona kore lirituse, dega maspa la omongwa Joe Morolon babulete, kore retohuko pa kore honeli ba bereki ba likane, kore ba kono kore ba shabena balibalanili di kwedho tsyo kadi na ting ba kono ku di.
Daar is danse brandveerstasi wat opgerich word en ons burgemeester zal dit werkelijk als vooruitstremend of splinter niet beskou en ons hoop dat dit ook voor ons die capaciteit zal toelaten om genug personeel te kanin, om kwaliteiddienst te lever.
Because at the end of the day we don't just want to have a building which doesn't have resources and which doesn't set to deliver quality service to our people. And lastly I would like to propose to this committee to propose to those who are responsible for the organizational structure of parliament to consider to have satellite offices in district as a tool to bring parliament closer to the people, for our people to understand the work of parliament better.
Sessen kape kore kara areba kohore refele tare nalika re akile fele arnalimu ahko efela kose na ba bereki ba likane, resina lididi ri swa, tselikane litse tswanezing tsema leba. Sessen kape ke kara ta kohutakisa kore honeli satellite, mo parlamenta kore honeli satellite office mo kaufi, mo elo kore etokhona kore ituse kahonea tsedi muso, mo sitchabi le lohutso letzape lirisa.
Ons wil graag he dat wa ook met iwe brandveerstasi dat dit nie te leer gebouw is zonder rolbronne nie, want ons wil he dan moet goeiedienst aan die mensen gelever kan worden. En dan wil ik ook aan iwe parlemente regen dat die organisatorische structurer ook moet oorwege om satellitkantoren in iwe district op te regen en antebreng dat die mensen ingelicht kan worden en opgelijk kan worden oor die procesen wat nale te kom.
Our people today would be more familiar with the settings such as this one and be able to contribute meaningfully to the sessions. Thank you.
Ba rona ba sitchabasara ba tla kona kore ba twa eh le di kopano tsahos tseswananlese le kore ba kona kore ba tswa banke karolo, ba kona kore ba nse di tsweilos abona, tsse butokwa tata tsedika ritusa kya le bo.
Dit zal dit moendlik markt dat die mensen van hieri gebied ook meer bekend is en ingelicht is oor wat die proces behals bij sittings susiri en dat helle ook beter en meer ingelichte bijdraags kan leverer. Bye danke.
Eh na kila bo.
Eh thank you for the opportunity.
Ki lumi se parlament.
Greetings to members of the parliament.
Goeidag, bye danke für iwe geleendheid en grüd weens aan iwe leader van iwe parlement.
De haren ke troshe kahwalatalana, de haren ke troshe kahwalatalana di tiru, de haren ke troshe kahwalatalana di tiru troshe.
And the support staff and everyone present here today.
Ek grüd ook die personeel en iwe ondersteeningspersonnel wat hier vandaag is.
Ki lumi se ba kolo le ba shaboke.
Greetings to the elders and the youth.
Ek grüd ook die jygh in ons bejaardes.
Na libisula kaki lina kaki petras selimoho.
My name is Petras Selimoho.
My name is Petras Selimoho.
From Maputing, eh hassechonjana.
From Maputing, eh hassechonjana municipality.
Ekis van Maputing en iwe hassechonjana municipality.
Na kila membara CPAI ko mo presia Grootfontein.
Eh I was a member of CPA, eh am a member of CPA at Grootfontein farm.
Ekis a led van iwe CPEA, maar iwe Grootfontein plaats.
Ape kila membara Aboto, mo cooperative yaskema.
I'm also a board member at Sema, eh Sema Cooperative.
Ekis okeraalze top iwe Sema cooperative organisatie.
Ki le ba kala lohne amulawo teona.
Eh we appreciate, eh we are grateful for this bill.
Ons is dankbaar voor hieri weizondwerp.
Kore amulawo teona, outse karolo iskana intipromisiu ore yanna, anela ore kamusho amulawo teona warifila kapo kamusho, amulawo teona kodi kiri unsuccessful.
Eh and I hope that it is going to be, eh as it is implemented, I hope that eh it is going to realize the objectives eh, we wish that we eh, we further realize all the objections, the objectives that are contained in the bill.
Dan hoop ik ook dat susiri weizondwerp geïmplementeer zal worden zal ons hier die doelstelling wat in die weizondwerps omgevat is zal kan realiser.
Ki le bo kata kavani, kanzila kanziruna ba kule kate, puso kapamulawo teo warifila.
Eh we appreciate it because most of the time there is this perception that the government is failing us.
Ons hoop dat dit werkelijk gerealiseerd kan worden, want daar is meestal van iwe tijd hieri persceptie dat die regering ons kan misluk.
Ki le bo kata kore kona kaya no, arnalima le meale, anansali lebe na kona nalama le me alu twelve.
Eh because eh at the moment we know that we have twelve languages.
Ons wieto sitans op iwe omdlik twelve tande.
Ya na kaka kupoe kolo mo konna kore, ya ya kari risore kala seni Russia ya loa.
Eh I have a humble, humble plea now because you know the level of poverty we are facing and also that eh, the, also because of the war in Russia.
My pleidoo is ba niedrig, want ons he verskraklijke armoede hier en dit is ook as gefolg van die oorlog in Rysland.
Esapela ape kopa koreaka eh puso ibua kore, alu over thirty-five years. Hasse kolé, lausniya di CV, oma ki di tiru lo kate, applications aga olusi in unsuccessful.
And the other challenge eh which we have observed is that eh every time eh when they, we, when our children apply eh their applications become, when they put in their CVs, their applications become unsuccessful.
Dan etos okera idaaging dat wanneer ons kaners ansukten verposte met daare CVs, dan is hieri ansuke unsuksesful.
Eh ne kopa kore after thirty-five years eh, apuso kritimi beroko kapo, ineba ba twa ba alu over thirty-five years eh, iba de, iba ne pensionar, iba ne pension.
We are making a humble plea that the eh government must consider those who are over thirty-five years for employment or if not there must be some eh social intervention of some sort eh like a social grant.
Dan etos okera niedrig pleidoo aan iwe regering dat mensen ouer as vijfendarrach jaar oorwege moet word verposte of al dan nie, dat daar sociale ingrijping zal wies met ein of ander toelag om mensen te help.
Eh ne kopa kare kape apuso neka kreta sanjinyaka, di bulldozerara, di screpara, li di excavator, kore modi sile modi plasimona, ba kona kore sekamoditsila ya na kore, ba amulelo kara, mo loskwa kona kore kopa tilaka, ka kamori plasimisiru kapo, ba kona kore hisali le ruola batu.
Eh we are also making a humble request for the government to provide resources so that we can eh make the fire bridges eh where we are staying so that the fire when it erupts, it does not spread to other neighboring areas.
Dan etos okera verschuk aan iwe regering voor holbronne om brandstruikete kan implementeer zodat zo e felbrand uitbreek dit nie kan verspreiden die nabierige gebiede nie.
Ya kona kore kikisa sitiyo kaka kopa proposala mo, mo kaba maintain, a parlamenta kore, ya kate kaskema ale, before, previous, kona kona le, le puso ne kriti lebo kore batu, ba kongpusa kate mo kaskema ale.
Eh I am now proposing because eh previously the government used to bring people to come and assist people in the farms.
Ek is dan nou e voorstel omdat ons voorigen eh help gekraaid van iwe regering aan mensen bij die plaatsen.
Li ma mabele, li ma midi, li ma resi, li ma di vegetables.
Eh we were eh plowing different plants like grain, maize and rice and vegetables.
Ons he verschkelende gewassa ongeplant in hoes, so as milis in grunte.
Ya ne kopa kore puso ma ba pili agriculture, li puso alu, le ba le mis, ba kona kore ekta kore, ba konsu se projekti kaskema ere.
Eh we are asking the, the government particularly the department of agriculture eh to revive that project so that eh they can assist eh people in our farm.
Dan frans die regering en in besonderi departement van landbouw om daardie type Schemas en projecte te laade herleef zodat ons die plaatselijke mensen kan help.
Ki le bo kore karo, kona kaya no eh englo american ba kila ba ruso kona kore le ma tamati, chukamba, le kabish.
Eh we are grateful that englo american eh assist at us so that we are able to eh plow eh those different eh plants.
Dan is ons ook ba dankbaar voor englo american wat ons gehelp het om hieri gewassa te kan planten in weer hoes.
Ki le bo kore kaka kupo, parlament, kala seni, ar kritimi beroko, le ba shalabone kaba ne tiru, alu konsu se se projekti kaskema ere, ba shalabone ba kane tiru ba kina experience.
Eh I am therefore eh making this humble plea eh to the government to intervene because eh we have eh, because of the level of poverty in our community, I think that if the government can take eh the relevant steps eh people can be assisted in our area.
Dan is het weer eens ma niedrig pleidoo aan iwe regering om in te treen om hieri vlakke van armoede antesprek, want ek is sieker as regering siekere stappen en plekstel zal dit help om hieri armoede onder ons mensen te verleg.
Eh sabo fure kyo kopa kore, kona olusi, konsu di projekti, siniya di applications eh, applications alu chudina successful, applications olusi kate unsuccessful, kyo kopa kanya successfully reni fere siwe.
Eh the other thing is that eh every time when there are projects, when we make eh the applications eh we are, in fact our applications are not successful, I am asking the government to consider that aspect.
Dan ook wanneer ons verprojecte ansukten vind ons uit dat ons ansuke unsuksesful was en ek froh raadig voor iwe regering om in te treen in hieri aspect.
Ki le bo kawa ne fasere ki la modimu, le chukese li mo koloane, kere masolo ma kolo parlament, samaya lo talenta salona, lo de kriti, eh le kore, le fasere ki la modimu le kya le mu bo mo le mo, kya le bo kwa amakalo.
Eh in conclusion, I would like to thank you very much as we all know that the land belongs to God and everything in it and I would like to urge you to use your talent so that you can make eh interventions which will be impactful in our communities.
Dan tens toteverlek i bedanken ook voor iwe weer en see dat hieri grond in iwe land bewort aan god en ek moedig je aan om iwe talente te gebruik om in te treen zodat ons ook hieri probleme kan ansprek en vooruit kan lief.
Thank you so much Seh, next speaker please.
Oké, kyalog. Ek is eh tsonu ek, ke lebo ke lohutso medisa, the chairperson, the cabinet, the members of the parliament.
Eh may I start by greeting the chairperson eh and the committee and all members of parliament.
Ekwa begin di er die voersterte grut en iwe leader van iwe parlemente, iwe commiteerleader.
Ke recognize eh lohle bo ka majoroa rona, li directoraya rona.
And then I want to also recognize eh and thank for our mayor who is here present.
Dan wil ik ook ons burgemeester erkennen bedank wat hier teamvoorig is.
Seket lohutso kopa ngisena.
So here is what I am going to ask for.
Sabeli.
Hier is wat ek voor wol fro.
Yes eh, before, before that, eh before ke fana kalibitso, kesana se ke kopa.
Eh the, I want to do so before I actually give out my name.
Ek wil eerst in voorhet ek mijn naam vee hier.
Ke kopa se ke si buang.
I would like to ask that what I'm going to say.
It will not be in eh, as a representative of working on fire because we have a strict policy on that even though I'm in uniform.
Ek wil fro dat dit wat ek see as individief geachtel word en nie as e vertienvooriger van e brandvechter organisatie nie, alu wel ek hier in my uniform staan.
Therefore, secondly si buang will be as an individual or al be representing ki kisimantel business enterprise and itusem banabata.
Kajaloge, seket lohutso si buang fano faseta be kisi buang ya kamutu, ke mesengano si khotza, nokha to omongwe obidwang banabatari.
Itusem banabata.
Itusem banabatari.
Dan wil ik see dat dit wat ek nou zal see as individief vertienvoorigse word of as private entity of a maatschappij vertienvoorig.
Lina ke kyo tsepile lenox olifant, ke tlaga ke le mo veksevena kafotlasaha Joe Morolon.
Eh lina lakaki lenox olifant eh ke toamo eh maspa lewa.
Joe Morolon.
Joe Morolon.
My name is Lenox, wille fun ek is van die Joe Morolon eh municipale gebied.
Re nale challenge nyanahakutwa mo mo kachonki, nyala nale amendmente en ameki ratako takisa dipointe nyanazemaloa regarding that.
We've got some challenges in our organization but now we do accept the bill however there are one or two points that I would like to bring eh to your attention.
And some of these points.
Ons onfaro hieri weizondwerp alu wel daare paar idaagings is wat ek onder iwe andag wil breng.
Some of these points will be based on my experience and expertise as a firefighter.
Eh di chadi wuseket la di buang di chabidi kaya kila kamaydamu kola, akinangloane ya kamutu yo o, luan sang khotza yo timamolelo.
Van hieri idaagings zal ek peti deel wat ek erforie uit my erforing en kundigheid as e brandbestrijder.
Eh sabeli ke ba tla koh, tla mo ishuin eh, mention ulenke met time eh, eh the act ya eh maika rabelo hakutwa mo the FPA, the land owner.
So eh first of all I would like to focus on the section of the bill that has got to do with eh responsibilities of the land owners.
Eerstens wil ek fookis op iwe afdeling van iwe weizondwerp wat handel oor die grondaienash.
I'm going to mention one of the things that is not here, Act 101 of nineteen ninety-eight. All land owners.
Kito kubua kasingo se ilongor kasi of ano fasesa amana le mulawa, 101 of nineteen ninety-eight.
Dan wil ik graag fookis op iets wat nie genoom word in 101 van negentien aregentig nie.
All land owners, it says all land owners.
So yare eh bengbo kiba di cha.
Dit see alle grondaienash.
Must train their personnel.
Ba tswane toho kore eh bone ba katisa ba di ribabo.
Moet daar die personeel oplei.
All land owners must be part of the FPA.
Me eh bengbo kiba di cha ba tswane toho kore enema logo, a MPA.
FPA.
FPA.
Alle grondaienash moet deel forum van die BBF.
All land owners must provide with proper PPE or PPC or equipment.
Ba bengbo kiba di cha ba tswane toho kape ba, ne ba di ribabo ne, di aparaturi di bi cha kore ki PPP khotza ta bi tiru leza, mo mele.
Now, the reason I'm pointing out.
Alle grondaienash moet personeel turis met e persoonlijke beveiligingstechnologie of touristing en ook alle relevante touristing moet die grondaienash die mensen je eh turis.
The reason to point out this is there's a critical point here, um who is our, who are these land owners that we are referring to?
Kaya butokwa ekki buatla koe takisa fano, ek butokwa tata kore, bengba oba di cha, otaki bo ma.
En dit is een kritike punt, wie is hieri grondaienash waar na daare verwaes word?
Looking at the communal land for villages, looking at the tribal councils, looking at the municipality, so we need to identify who are they, who will be responsible when we come to this point and how will they account?
Arileba eh di cha zamafuloa kakanetuin, kape reberileba, ba ilongor ki, ba itiridipile basi so, khotza reberileba, ba ilindikaro tabo maspa la, senten le mo kubone, bengba ba di sa kabo kubua ka mangmo kubone.
Bijvoorbeeld ons moet kijk naar gemeenschapelijke grond, eh grond wat hier traditionele dorpies of stammen besit word, municipale eiendom en so forth en ons hoop kan bepenen wie is voor elke stiek eiendom verantwoordlik en hoe zal hieri persoon verantwoordbaar gehouw word?
So setaru tusah kore, hade bill eh amendmente wajana, mongelmona aba ayitimaika rabelola maika miseso alu koro eswanse arts en emo kore on.
This is going to help us at the time of the passing of the bill into being eh the act, then everyone will be knowing their responsibilities as to where actually are they supposed to discharge that.
Dit is nourag zodat wanneer dit bij iwe punt kom, wanneer hieri weizigingswetzondwerp in e weid verordend word zal elke persoon wiet wat helle verantwoordlikere is en waar voor helle anspreklik gehouw kan word.
Another critical point.
Eh kya engwe kape butokwa tata.
Dan et ek nog een kritike punt.
The involvement of our police officers in this matter, it's critical.
Eh hona lisia beha, ba tshangedi mo kota, kanya ulenka yana monkling enue, ek butokwa tata.
Dan is die betrokkenheid van politiebeamtes in hieri verband dit is van absolute kritike belang.
Ninety-five percent of the fires, the failed fires are caused by arson.
Eh bunti joa melelo, ninety-five percent eh melelo ya naha, otaki melelo e ba kilo en kapomo.
Vijfendegent percent van felbrande word veroorstok hier sier.
As such, there are no arrests, there are no prosecutions, there's nothing being done with this and this is continuing to escalate.
Me, den butokwa ebene naha koro, konsu konsu jala ba twa tengha ba tsaari, ba twa tengha ba trolui, butokwa bonu na buntu butuwa lapile, fela bosafe.
Jan, we fijfendegent percent van brande word veroorstok hier brandstichting en dit is e verskraklijke groot probleem en dit is waarom politiebetrokkenheid ba belangrijk is om dit te bekamp.
Ke, we are happy ke tla kama le fa penelongla training and education.
I, I now want to jump into one other department and that is education.
Dan beweg ik weer nou nog e departement, wat die departement van onderwijs is.
As part of ki kiti mandeli, renale eh two-year contract, ekinali two-year contract eh le naida.
Ekinali eh kontra kaya di muaha dele peedi le naida.
Dan is daar okera twee jaar kontra.
Where we mentor youth and releka hobatli sa le mo ishuin ya eh farming.
Now, its main objective is to mentor the youth and also introduce them into farming.
Dan is die hoofddool daarvan om die jygh te mentor en ook helle bekend en blote stel aan landbouw.
From department of agriculture to agriceta, all the departments issue ya the fire has been left out, they are not mentored, they are not educated, people go into business without the knowledge of what is fire and how are they going to um secure themselves or.
Khotza fela koli fa penla eh agriculture, khotza la timautuyo koya kofika koli fa penla agricenta, rifikese, ilo kona kona di kanziru butokwa tata koloansamalelo, tohosa buingato ne kajaloge, ri poza kore, ba tla koba tusajang eh koba katisa, ilo kora ba tla ba kona kona likito eh ek kaka.
Dan wanneer dit kom bij landbouw, die departement van landbouw, agricetas, al daar organisaties laat brandbestrijding en brandvoorkoming youtemal uit en daar is nie opleiding daarom train nie, mensen gaan en mak begin bezighere met absolute geen kundigheid oor hieri aspect nie.
People are being given money to start businesses, small businesses, especially when it comes to farming.
Ba twa le banzi banawa ma, kora ba kono kisimolole la di kwedho, kola kola hara ma kanya nyatemo.
Wanneer dit kom bij landbouw word mensen ook gelde toe gestaan om plaatsen of landbouw te beginnen of boerproktaken te beginnen.
Yet they are not being prepared for what will happen, especially as fire happens. Yet they are not being prepared for what will happen, especially as fire happens every year. They are not being prepared for that part. It's not accounted for.
Batjobano ba kaba ba kanyediwi lohoka diseduakore, batshwane tukudi ra engha kathaha molelo jakahari tukore ekshakaka dinakutsoutli.
Mensen word uik nie opgelei en ingelug oer brandbestrijding en brandvoorkoming nie. En dit is iets wat elke jaar plaatsvind is dat branden en veld, veldbranden enzovoorts kan plaatsvind.
My request would be the bill covers that as well.
Kele tachoro mulautumo u akarazen cha ev.
Dit is my verschukter die wetsundwerk dit uik bespreek in dak.
Se singwe kopoki ena.
Now here is another plea.
Hier is nog een pleidooi?
Ah, all the departments of environmental affairs, all the departments, iti se ya karola, from agriculture to distia, all the departments, bat se ya karolo mo.
Re leta kore eh ma fa pa oche a chana la atimo le a amananglitrisana mojolione, aze karolo monkling enue eritsi tsinyaa.
Dit is pleidooi aan al die departement, aan landbouw tot omgeving sulke, sorry, what are they supposed to do?
Agriculture and distia.
And distia what?
Should take part in this FPA processes.
Dit is my verschukter dat hieri departement en hieri organisaties moet deelneem aan hieri BBFV organisaties.
Also let funding be something that is essential within this.
Kabere leta kore, lohko tsiridua kamati enen kaya bo tchoka idirisine.
Bevondsing moet uik iets wat Karen, eh uitzweers wat Karen is tot hieri wetsundwerk.
Twenty twelve, we tried to, we started um an FPA in ibizwa Molowatau.
Eh in twenty twelve, we started an FPA called Molowatau.
Onz het in twintig twaaf Molowatau probeer stig wat eh brandbestrijdingsvereniging is?
One of the reasons that it did not succeed, it was because of lack of funding.
Le bakalaw, lelela koko ile ya skaya atlehha ene elekancha hori nerisa tsiridiwi kamati.
Te kort aan bevondsing was een van die groot redes waarom hieri vereniging nie succesvol was nie.
Gyalawa.
Danki.
Thank you very much.
I know you've got so much to talk about and you can't finish the whole day. Can you write and give it to Chilaka? There's Joseph now in the meantime. So that we allow others and then others has been here for quite some time who are becoming counterproductive now, please. Okay? Then I also played with the oncoming speakers to say, you can also write and give it to the team. We'll consider your inputs.
Eh releka koko palelo na di buize di latelan, horo kapelokanalo akwalwa le isadi ngoorrazalona kotafulengue, naloe etes othoko.
Ik wil het ook eenie opkomende sprekers nimm dat, ie uik ie insal kan neersgreif en in die beide ondersteuning span.
Ah kilo di medise.
Let me say my greetings.
Ik wil graag mijn gruwens aidrek.
Molinelelela kolo lamata jesu christoaro.
In the powerful name of Jesus, our Lord.
En die machtige naam van Jesus Christ is ons hier.
Kele wo ke parlament eh arneend.
Then I want to say thank you to the parliament here present, evil parliament.
En ik wil ook dankie saan die parlement, die prachtige parlement hier.
Yo buangha ke Jacob Dipone.
Now speaking here, my name is Jacob Sipane.
Dipone.
Jacob Dipone.
En ik wil ook gruw, my name is Jacob Dipone.
Dipuaha, moma e monaaha. Eh, bulimi potlana.
So I am speaking here on behalf of the emerging farmers.
Ik braad hier namens die ontlijkende boeren.
Ki, ki emeti balimi potlana bamu pakani.
I am representing emerging farmers from Pakani.
Ik vertegenwoordig ontlijkende boeren van Pakani.
Pakani e kimorakaniana e rotlalankasiat.
So this Pakani is really a very small area where kettlers are, it's a, it's a small kettle post in other ways.
Pakani is een baai klein gebied waar daar weersaklik met bieste en veerboer word.
Ruile pudi mku lekou.
So what we have there is cows, goats and sheep.
Onz het in daar een gebied, bieste en boerboeken en skaper.
Renale di ngwaha te seven teeni ruile momorakanen yoa.
And then we have now seventeen years eh in possession of this kettle post.
Dan is ons nou al in besit van hieri stiki eh bijsboerderai voor die aflepe seventeen jaar.
Kusukonele mato, mor ruile onfo.
At that time, eh when we were raising all this livestock, there were no houses in the surrounding area.
To ons beginneet met hieri veerboerderai het ons eh nie enige huizen in die omdiggende area gehad nie.
So sesinkuti sambo tukoke kore, so sesinkuti sambo tukoke kore, rile kupusho, emo tate haro.
So what hurt me the most is that we actually contacted the government, that is actually over our jurisdiction.
Wat mij die hartse eerste gemalket is dat ons het uitgerijk na die regering wat beherit voor ons gebied.
Le jo ne bo kusigio le mo tate ngayo.
Even the traditional leadership eh that is actually under which we are.
Saas die traditionele leurskap war onder ons faal?
Relela, ka pudi sho, rekopa pudi sho.
We were actually complaining and telling them about pasture grounds that we need.
Onz het bijhellige clan en voor helle ingelug oer wae veld en waidingsgrond wat ons bereut nou era gehad het.
Hona hakibuajana moki ruelangho ne, hometi, hometi.
So basically then, the place where I'm raising livestock, eh there is a lot of places like dwelling areas, we don't basically have pasture grounds.
Dan nou die gebied waar ons met hieri veerboer eh het eh stikkies waidingsgrond maar als ie groet areas voor waiding nie.
Gyalo ga hona mor ruelangho.
So now it is impossible for us to raise our livestock.
En daarom is het bijkans onmuntlik voor ons om ons, ons veer um te verbouwen en te laat groei.
Reta me ile ricietiko masapala, masapala re bolagore, ri peb, moraka duhulialangho, rekaku risangho.
We've been to the municipality, we didn't receive any help, it was the point of us having to find ourselves as to where can we do this?
Onz het zelfs naar die municipaliteit toe gegan en gevraagd om hulp, ons het absolute geen opge, ontvang nie. En dit het maar een punt gerook dat ons maar onszelf moest help.
Du lotaragia thula motile.
Eh we lose livestock as it gets to be knocked down by cars on the road.
Daar is verliese aan veer wat eh getrapoor der karre op die pad.
Le batu tota ba, ba, ba machula ba tu atama ya katta tenya du lotaro, nadisidu du la motile.
And also there is a loss of life, human life, because our livestock are roaming the roads.
Dan het ons uik verliese aan mensenleewens, as gevolg van die veer van ons wat, wat eh langs die paaien en oer die paaien eh beveerg.
Lo kulela bulimi potlana kilu thule mo mo pusho.
Eh the first time when I heard of the expression emerging farmers, it was from the government.
Die eerste keer te ek die tarim of gewerit van die concept van ontlijkende boeren, het ek dit bij die regering gewer.
Maar kilemo akare pusho, frunarem bal, bal mi potlana, gaer bone ka se.
But then it seems to me that those of us who are emerging farmers do not care much to the government.
Maar dit blijkt voor mij dat ons wat ontlijkende boeren is nie werkelijk van belang is voor die regering nie, alweer geen irradig voor ons om nie.
Belaka utla bo tuka tu la ba tu buaka di plas.
It hurts me when I hear people speaking about farms.
Dit maak voor mij baai seer wanneer mensen oer plaatsen praat.
Ki posar ba tu ba debakraya di plas.
My question is how do they get to, those to be allocated to them?
Mijn vraag is hoe het helle de dreige krij om een plaats aan helle toegeken te krij.
Kaki itaker repatu ba pusho ele onwe, ba road.
Because I thought we are all people of the same government, all of us.
Ik het gedenk, ik het verstand, dit ons allemaal mensen van diezelfde regering is die helle spul van ons.
Maar au, utlahu i chaba, u seba le motuwa na lemplas, ewe katia nu, weena yosinang, yow karenwa i puda, wa timula hu i kokaruwa, u te la kutaha.
And then when you look at yourself and look at those who actually own farms, you know, it doesn't in your mind to say that just because you are an emerging farmer, you are being looked down upon.
En dan wanneer de mensen jezelf kijken, je kijkt naar ander boeren, dan wonder mensen, je weet, ik is nou een ontlijkende boer maar ik word ook neergekijk, ik is toch uik een boer.
Totali ene motuwa ele gore, wa hatrata se kaha, koe o elang, o o tokamelangvu, harimui.
So, sorry, even the very person whom we work under and who is our superior, we don't even know him, but we are taking care of the livestock.
Saas die persoon onder wie ons werk, ons kenie is er werkelijk hieri persoon, maar ons is die persoon wat zorg voor hieri veer.
Pusho i riliyare, retwale riti.
Eh the government said we must create jobs.
Die regering het gesee ons moet werksgedientiere skip.
But ruil, riri le motuka tokamela puli te taro zeo wa, ki, ki kawanya pe yakale.
But then we tried, we raised livestock, we employed somebody maybe to look after three goats, I actually share my pay with him.
En ons het probeer, ons het zelfs, man gekrij om zelfs nou niet in drie bokken te kijken, ik het my, my salaris met omgedeel.
Maar pusho, hakia go koe o deke kopatu shore, nang hela moki akwanangku ruelala du lotzaka ho ne, hakikrei tu.
But when I go to the government and say, please, just give me a place where I can just be able to raise my livestock, I get nothing.
Maar wanneer ik naar die regering toe gaan en so mooi fro, as e bliv, net de lapien grond waarop ik my veer me kan boer, dan krij ik net niks.
Hakiba tille hatilo, ki ba tala moka hwanangku ruwela du la, mori tla hwanangku ruwela ho, harika lo reka na twelve wela, ba, ba, ba ri mi potlana wa mo paka.
I don't want the huge amount of land, all what I want is just where I can be able to raise my livestock, we not that many, we are only twelve farmers.
Ik vro nie voor een massive groot area nie, ik vro net voor een lapje grund groot genoeg dat ik my beste in veer kan op groot maak, en ons is nie maar een mensen nie, ons is maar twaalf boeren.
Kialo tere teu parliamente.
Now please, parliament.
Nou pla hie tek as e bliep bij i, parlement?
Ki taggera se lo sa ka, kasi, 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 kasi hie te hela se tana le mu li pilunzanye.
I really hope that my plea is not falling into deaf ears, it really touches you right through into your hearts.
Ik wil werkelijk dat mijn pla hie doe nie opduwe, oer risse van hie dit raacht, toch toep in i hart zal salk maak.
Ke ma ha ki zuhore tuhsho yaka, etla go mo ho ne.
I am standing here speaking, knowing full well that my help is going to emanate from you.
Ik staan hier voor i, wetend dat mijn hulp totaal en al van i af zal komen.
Danki.
Thank you.
Ha, danki.
Esokala, mandi bulise is sizo esila pasong ke si pelele, keliche ka maga esokresi tungosi etoame. Eh, ekamala mgo mttuzeli.
First of all, I would like to greet everyone in the house, my name is Mttuzeli.
Mttuzeli Valela.
Mttuzeli Valela.
Hoi, twee dag gaan ie allemaal, ik wil graag allemaal in i huis groet, mijn naam is Mttuzeli Valela.
Eh, di ma pan dingu treba, lo melalenda ward councila, lo melalenda ward fifteen.
Eh, I stand here as a ward councillor representing ward fifteen.
Ik is hier as een, ik is hier as een wijkstraatslid van wijk vijftien van Gasegonyane.
Mandi bulise omoyawit fu sinae apa, mandi bulise ku bazali bitu che, abapu my parliament, mandi bulise chief wip, wip tu kuasengonyane, mandi bulise ku ba ambi bonki abakulendau.
Greetings to the mayor, the chairperson, honourable members of parliament, and everyone who has come to this gathering.
Mijn groet weense is aan die achbar burgermeester, die voorzitter, die achbar lereerde, en ook allemaal hier te vorige bij die vergadering.
Eh, che mna ndi zo bam tensa bam fitchanin jen diaka ulen di ahoka, ku ba ika shaliseko.
Eh, I am not going to be long because I don't have many issues to raise and also because of time, I'm just going to highlight a few issues.
Weense tijdverperking, sal ik nie baan lang wees nie, ik wil net een paar kwesties bij i open.
Di vu melana na yom na, se vu melana nomte to losa subusayo.
We support this bill.
Ik wil bij i say dat ons hierie wees ondwerp ondersteen.
Eh, guhufi chanin disa fundanjeh, i pointe sinda twoe zimbe ni, di chon diu, diu salapa nzi.
Eh, in summary, I will just read eh two or three points and leave it at that.
En op soming sal twee of tri penteliezen in het doorlos?
Eh, disa was fundan goku komsha, di tetti english, di fundanjeh apa, diabule.
Ah, I will read it in English, thank you.
Actually, English lies, ba danki.
Eh, eka liesa fundan gangalsho.
The first one, read eh this way.
Ja, steen, ja, steen is sure.
The training and procurement of equipment for, for the, for the, for the FPA's will be welcomed. The finding and operate will be functionally, functionally, FPA will be appreciated. And annually indaba for FPA must be arranged to a better service and for learning, for, for learning the best practice for the other FPA, for, for the previous FPA that we know that the other FPA have been for indaba. So what requesti to be the same thing that must be put on the bill, thank you very much, thank you.
Eh, ka bukhuswanyane, se kinne kesabulela holofa, ka ho re rilebo ka tata ncha e ya tupelo, eh, ka mo ho eh taxisengatengmo mulawongo, ebile kape nchwen ncha engwe ere ratilenke ona eh ya di SP, FPA, ilidi kopano se za ba, ba lan sanghurunya ka hamelo, neke kopan ho re, rehokola ho re mona kong efitile, rile ra ba lzo na di FPA ho ba le ka mo ho ore zamaisan ka ho na, neke ba ta ho re reziye mou, rehokona ho re re tu te mou, le ho re, rehokona ho re, re, rechol le pele, ka ho zamaisana le moula utkomo o ka mo ho o bi luengkateng.
Opleiding en turisting wat verschien word aan die BBF's wordt verwelkom in ons vroeg dat daar jaarlijks in Dalbas voor opleiding angebied zal word, zodat mensen opleiding kan ontvangen vanuit die vorige jaar se BBF organisatie, en die opleiding daarop kan bouw, ba danki.
That's your tip.
Okay, nou, Eric het zei chon oh, wat ga je choku doen met diese parlamentarona?
May I take this opportunity to greet members of the parliament?
Ik wil graag wanneer die geleentijd gebruik, wil kom leer van die parlemente verwelkom in groet.
Ho program director.
Eh, to the program director.
Lady colleague it's aha koe.
And her colleagues.
The all parliamentary staff.
Libadi ruchla ba parlamenta.
Realele bo ka reale itu melala.
Eh, we are, we, we really, eh, we are really grateful for the opportunity to interact with you.
Ani program directeer, ani committier, ani voorzitter, wollen sie verwelkom in, ook ba dankbar, she friri geleentijd.
Eh, you buam fa keselom olatlehi.
My name is Selom Olatlehi.
Mijn naam is Selom Olatlehi.
Ka fo le fappella bo ho si.
I am from the Traditional Authority.
Ak is van die traditionele overheid?
Motla se ka bo ho sa na dua ha kosi sitoudi.
Under chief, eh, Sitoudi.
Ak is onderstam wif Sitoudi.
Eh, jobi ikarabe la mo ha baha Janki.
Under the Janki tribe.
Onder die Janki stam?
Hmm, kee mafa ki uka bo thoko ka ho re, tota bo kosi baha echo, ha bui tsuho rohudi ra hala.
I am saddened because the Traditional Authority does not know.
It's in which municipality this one?
Maspala ofing.
Eh, kasa hojani?
Kasa hojani.
Ak is hartser om die traditionele overheid enie allemaal hier is nie?
Eh, ki u dulebo tokotat, oh, I'm very saddened because the Traditional Authority knows nothing about this public hearing.
Hmm, unless le ho re, di councillora zaronah, ho we di sitemola, za la ta ko bo kosi.
Or maybe our councillors conveyed the message very late to the, eh, eh, to the Traditional Authority.
Dit kan ook wees dat ons raatsleerendalke die uitnouring ba laad of kenisgeving ba laad aan die traditionele overheid oer gedraait?
Me, se weso holo ko re ke wa ta holebo ha motu om, om me milim for di ra halawa kumpie no, amema hela is insemola ho.
Eh, I would like to be grateful to the person who invited me here, he just invited me and told me to come here.
Ak is ba dankbaar, ook an die persoon wat mij genooit om hier te wies.
Hakie eme fa, kile molatlehi, kosi hadi itzhora, akie eme fa.
Eh, as I'm standing here as molatlehi, the chief does not know that I'm here.
So, swet ki je staan, weer is tam wif molatlehi, ak is nie nie?
Hmm, le bo net tota ba ta makala, ba ta mpona ke tla kala la mu TV.
They will be very surprised to see me on TV.
Ha, helle gaan baan fraas weso maupi televisietesien.
Ki bua ka zamahas.
Eh, talking about these issues regarding land.
Ki bua ka zamelelo.
Eh, also eh the fires.
Om, ook weer die kwesties waarie land in brandet praat.
Ki skaka ya lololo, kere, kere baha echo, ki amo hela, bili ele tlan kayaone.
Eh, I would like to say that eh we support this bill.
Ik wil eerst eens nimm dat ons hierie wees ondwerp ondersteen.
Bo kosi yokibuwa ankajo ne baha echo, ki dua mete e shu pilein, ya kasa hojani.
The chief tensee I'm talking about, there are seven villages at se hojani.
Daar is sieves dorpis in se hondjani?
Jobo motla tsa ha kosi sitoudi.
Under chief se Khodi.
Onderstam wif se Khodi.
Ki tliohwa la metana e shu pilein, ekibuwa ankayo.
I am going to mention the seven villages I am referring here.
Axal, hierie sieve dorpis nüm warna?
Mo zoan tla ke mama rabe seven mile. Ya bo bedi ki ka fo swedi, ka fo ha kosi sitoudi, mo swedi, ki di bita tsututotla di talosa. Wa bo raro ki ka fo mapo ting, ho bo ho re mahojani, ho bo ho re tamoyan chi, ho bo ho re kodikuwe. Ke mete, ek kosi sitoudi, wi ikarabe la mo ho yo.
Eh, those are the seven villages under the chief tensee of eh chief se Khodi.
Ek buas tsoana sesa ta ta baha echo, lo mte lo romolatlehi, buas tsoana sesa ta ta.
When I speak difficulties now, you must indicate that to me.
As my setsoana for i moeyle, ak is ontevstam, met if no ek susi.
It's royalties, it's sanasako royalties, it's sanasako bohosing.
Yes.
It's deep one.
Deep one, eh, eh, ke, ke rata ho bua ya na, ke ro ko bohosing, it's not like we are not educated.
Eh, it is not like eh, that in the chief tensee we are not educated.
Dat is nie as of onder hierie stamwif dat ons onopgelain oningelig is nie.
We used to analyze everything.
Rona re, re nerera ta ho shavis, ho libelis is adin ka, ma ta go ro oti, kase tsoana.
Ons maak alles deep tsoana, ons vertsoana alles.
Ke, ke, ke ba ru deyri baba ko, baba bo ko bohosing baha echo.
Eh, we have people who are highly educated in our chief tensee.
En ons stam het ons ook baan mensen wat baan wigh geleerd is.
Kalwa kalaho re baha echo, re ki tliohwa yama fa ki ukliohwa kamelelo.
Eh, the reason I stood up is because I heard that we are speaking about fire fires.
Hierere warum ik opgestaan het om te praat, is omdat ik gewerit dat ons oer felt brandet praat.
E lenho re, it's a mar e bo na, eh, shahhongo lohongwe.
Eh, because we see these fires erupting everywhere.
Want ons seen dat hierie brande urals uitbreek.
And then we ask ourselves, what is happening there?
Rona ripots, ka bo rona ho re, kudi ra halan holofa.
Afro ons zelf, wat gebier da, wat hi daar gebier?
Eh, hontso koele alo rilebo kosi re na le, koe tloe tona baha echo.
Eh, as the chief tensee, we have a big challenge.
As, jeem erferting vorige van is tamwif het osse baan groot aidoging.
Re na ledilo tze lenho re repalala ke ho, le baha na le shone kanamaani.
Eh, we have, eh, there are some things which we cannot eh attend to ourselves.
Daar is somige kwesties waar op ons nie zelf kan reager nie.
Eh, remua pele ke ba tuba ngo baba relé.
Eh, we are being led by other people.
Ons wordier ander persoonen gelai?
Ki tumela ka ho re maspala is here already?
I am.
Parlamenta is here already?
I am grateful that the municipality is here and the parliament is here as well.
Ak is ba bla dat die municipaliteit en die parlement hier is.
Har chare tere tere di chrejo, mometza ne nyarona rilebo kosi.
Eh, when we are supposed to take decisions in our village as the chief tensee.
Wanneer ons en ons stam besleiter mitniem?
Always maspala etranetse ebile ho ne, hawa, e ba ta hui tsuho re, what the decision we are taking for?
The municipality always wants to know why are we making such decisions?
Volde municipaliteit altijd wiet waar om ons sierker besleit niem?
Ses utusamo tokoko ho re, heri bita the whole staff maspala, especially bo mayor, bo majoro ba rona re, just come and sit down, le rona ribue kadu etzamozzi, they don't avail themselves.
Eh, what is saddening is that each time we have challenges and we call the municipality to interact with us regarding certain issues, they don't avail themselves.
Wat voor mij baard hier is, dat wanneer ons aidoging sini gesagd staar, en ons uitrek naar die municipaliteit om ons te kom help, maak helle dezelf niet beskikbaar om ons te kom zien en net te help nie.
Ke koe tloe rona le ona bo bohosi.
Eh, that is the challenge we have as the chief tensee.
Dit is wat ons als oefskap erfaring, waarie aidoging s is.
Re bo na di projecte diya zena mometzi, kapametza ne nyarona.
Eh, we see eh projects eh in the, in the communities or in our villages.
Ons seen dat daar projecte is in die gemeenschappen en ons dorpen stamme?
Di projecte tere di zena mometzi wa rona, hierie create a lot of dumping.
And those pro, projects creates a lot of dumping.
Daar die projecte veruwshak ook baan rommelstorten.
Tze lenho re haru waru, borakontra kapanyenava, maspala ntsang di dumping mo arahamozzi, honna bo lebo ta ta.
And when we eh tell the contractors or the municipality to remove the rubble eh, it becomes a problem.
En wanneer ons die contracteer in die municipaliteit ansprek, en see dat hierie bou rommel verweider mit word, dan et ons ne probleem.
Honna lebo ta ta ya lo re, riskiri itzhoro, ribize man kaparibu ele mamobone.
Eh, we are facing such a problem because eh ultimately we don't know who to call eh in the, within the municipality.
Eh, bakhol.
Program?
Ki awana, you have been speaking, can't you reduce this thing in writing?
Okay, I have to speed up the.
So that you feed up, so that we finish, now we are just pressed for time?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, then we can still, there's the team, anyone, I can assure you all your issues.
Thank you.
If they relate to the municipality, we'll isolate them, give them timeline to respond and follow up on them, if it's for the departments, we'll sort out the same.
Thank you, program director.
And then the other issue like I understand, we'll talk to our advanced team eh on their dry run, maybe they came to the mushate, these are the issues that they could have already eh, eh got them and then bring them with us, yeah.
Actually, I'm here to expose the municipality.
Ah.
I'm here to expose them.
Okay.
Because they don't comply with the chief tensee, that is why I'm wasting time. So any our program director, without wasting your time, Eric, kere fela kere, rudwile baha echo re, kama nyala moula wa melalo, le rona, re katanon le melalo e shang, re, rukusi wa bo tokoke ba to ba, ba meraka, ba to ba ba ruiling, ba to ba ba na le massimu, hadu etzabo ne di shako wa ba ta mo ho rona, re chwan tere tla waraba, re sa itzhoro, re araba e. Kiale bo ho?
Eh, we, we have heard and we, we support this eh bill, eh, we support this bill eh, eh, what saddens us is that all the stakeholders eh in the, in the farms, when they have problems, they come to us, and eh that is what we wanted to relate to the municipalities.
Rallevo.
Ba danki, en ons wensie ons ondersteen hierie wees ondwerp, wat ons en baan hartser maak, is erie belangheben, dat swet op hierie bloes, das is een probleem, eh dan kom allemaal na ons, ba danki.
Eh, komu toke, mu tama is etro, walet sa chi ka mo ho le ba wata mayan le bo ne.
To the honourable program director of the day and your associates.
Ani achbar program directeer en i, en i afgevormed is?
Mahosi ba rona, ka mo ho le, balim ruile bo treba balim kamunti, kiale bo ka baha echo.
Traditional leaders and all the farmers and everyone here present within the hall.
Ons traditionele laier, alie boeren, en amo i ken vorige enie sol?
Eh, baha echo ke ta namu kuti ano, ho ne, di loze ke nin kenale to, ni di seti di builue, di builue, bo ho lo tata yang si buisan ka, sesi meseng Afri Forum, ka ba kan tseka tso.
I'm going to be very brief because most of the things I wanted to say have already been said, especially by the very first speaker eh who represents Afri Forum.
Ak kan polet en praat, meest af enig goed is wat ek baan gesee het, is erie het gesee, en die persoon wat hiersteh gepraat het, wat voorie afri, afri flerem het gepraat, het klaro oer gesas.
Eh, na li na lamke Solomon Batzamiki, ho toka kumuti wa mapiniki?
My name is.
Solomon Batzamiki?
My name is Solomon Batzamiki.
Mijn naam is Solomon Batzamiki.
Ho toka kumuti wa mapiniki, motasaka kosi itu meli.
And then I'm from the se, the village Mapiki, under the jurisdiction of chief eh Itumeli.
Ak kom van die dorpi of, sorry, village?
Mapiniki?
Mapiniki, en ak is onderis tamwif Itumeling.
Ki tokolo ya, mapiniki Afri Forum, eh, welan motasaka kosi itu meli, eh, idruan ke mete, eh, le, le shomel e bo we.
Eh, I am a member of the.
Mapiniki Afri Forum.
Afri Forum, which is under the jurisdiction of chief Itumeling.
Ak kom van Mapiniki Afri Forum af, en is onderis tamwif Itumeling?
Eh, baha echo, le rona rika ma nyali, bili eh parlamenta, itling kayaone, ho re rete, honna lidichaloma, baha echo, rika ma nyaloe.
We want to say that we also eh support the bill which the parliament has brought here before us, so that we can also have our rights.
Ons vroeg, xons ondersteen hierie wees ondwerp, waarie parlementa ons gebringe, en otro ons rachter kan uitvullen.
Melalo e baha echo, ek ha hang, ka mo ho li di trata, siri kaolang, ki di loza ka bo.
Eh, the fire fires, together with fences that have been torn apart, are things which people do deliberately.
Kaal brande in heinings wat hoop gesnijd of aidmakorheid gedraait hie, is iets wat mensen aspirst hie.
Re ne rekopa ho re baha echo, hapuso iru tusi mo di lonze, hapuso eka hira di rendjarak, ho re di, ho ne di ru tusi, ya, ka mana kunye hitile, ko no ko na li di rendjar, re ne rasa bo ne, ho na le melalo, ka mo ho le kaolaka di trat.
So we would like the government to please help us, just as they used to do in the past, and if they actually take, do take this step, we wouldn't have been seeing things that are happening now, we would be very much more like, eh, days gone by.
Ik wil, ik vro dat die regering ons weer beginne, of swet helle nie verleden ons gehaald hie, want dan zal ons nie meer zien dat hierie dingen plaats vind nie.
Me, ha di rendjarase baha echo se, di ka, di ka tla melo ka, di tla melona, se di maleba, se di tla ba kon samere koyaaka, ho re kela di tichi, ho re kela di baesekele, ka mo ho li di tama ya di bua, li li di waki ntoki, ba ka kon.
So we would like the people who have to keep an eye into controlling all of this problem, if they can have eh implements been bought for them which they can use, I'm talking about bicycles, I'm talking about being on horseback etcetera, we will be able to control and prevent this fire problem.
Ons wil graag verschuut dat die mensen wat hierie plekken moet beskarre, men wighie moet hau, moet die turisting gegeer word, tsusla moet fietsa gegeer word, of ook moet op paarden kan rij, om dit verscheker dat hierie nie meer plaats vind nie.
Sesewo baha echo rekopa ho re eh, di red tapes, tere di buanang, di le ho ne mo, balim ruim ba rona, habara ta ho ka kopa di fance, ho we, ba ba ta ho ka, ba ta di plas, diya wo, diya lo, diya lo eh rekopa ho re, le fapa baha echo, lele ke kudi ngot.
Eh, we would like the department to please be easy on the red tape, so many of them that are pertaining to farmers wanting to have a farm or funds, that is a problem, if please you can eh reduce the red tapes, so that these people can be able to get what they want.
Ons wil vri department vro, om ons laat te rock van alie romslo, wat gaan hoor boeren wat vro verplasen of vergoud, dit is ons verschuut dat dit so verminder word.
Ki bua ka baha echo, di procedure, ho ne, ota bu ko kote eh, uisityo ko credit be.